Good morning, all. Let's call the meeting to order. Today, we'll start with prayer, and we have Pastor Harold Watkins with the Freedom Fellowship to lead us in prayer.
Father, it's an awesome occasion to be here today. And as we begin this prayer, I lift up and I ask the hearts of the people in this room and to lift our hearts toward those in Oklahoma and Texas that have been devastated, not just yesterday, but in recent days, from loss through storms and explosions, Father, that we would be mindful of their needs, that we would be the people of God you've called us to be, to bring restoration and healing. We thank you for your compassion and for the great stories of compassion, Father, that we've heard and read about, how people step up in times of need. But, Father, may we be those same kind of people here in San Angelo, Texas. Father, we would thank you today for the rains that have been coming upon our land, and we thank you in advance for the rains that are coming. We give you praise and glory for that. Father, I know there is transition taking place here in the city government through newly-elected officials that will be sworn in today. So, Father, we pray for those who are coming in and those who would leave, those who are already here and are staying here, Father, that the spirit of wisdom would still reside and continue to reside in this place, that you would guide the hearts and the minds of your elected people. Father, they're here because you've ordained it, and we are submitting to them and to that authority as they lead us. Your law, your word says that the fulfillment of the law is love. So, Father, may they guide with wisdom, but may it be superseded by their love for the people of this city. Father, I thank you for your grace that covers us. I thank you that this is a city of, that you've called to be a city, an oasis in the desert, so to speak, Lord, because we know that it's growing, there are more people coming. But, Father, may we be prepared. Your word says that we can make our plans, but you direct our steps. So, Father, that's my prayer. I pray that that's the prayer of every elected official in this city, that we can make our plans, we can prepare, but you direct our steps. And, Father, I thank you that you taught us to pray, and I would ask you to join me today. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Thank you.
I'm joined this morning by Jesse White. He's in the sixth grade at Trinity Lutheran School, and he's going to help me with the pledges.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or on the consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. Also, the council may request an item be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. So, do I have any requests from council? Sir?
This goes along with what Brother Watkins just said. And Kendall, I'm going to ask you to be with me on this, but ever since we began our mayoral campaign, every one of us, Paul included, has said, "We're going to put God first, our neighbor second, and ourself last." And that has kind of been a campaign pledge that each of us has made. Well, our friends, our neighbors in Oklahoma City need our help. I'm not going to be here. Ten minutes, I'm going to be gone, and I'm not going to be back for another month, Kendall. So, you need to step up on this. You've got another month. But we need to, we need to get something together with maybe Lincoln Shipley, the Walmarts. We need to collect water, some Gatorade, and we need to get a truck to Oklahoma City. So, that's my last request as a council member. I think we need to work for our neighbors. So, I put it out to you, Daniel. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to take us to a procedural issue for the second, for a moment. On the consent agenda, is there anything council would like to have moved?
Yes, I'd like to pull seven and 10.
Okay.
And 16.
Okay. So, I have seven, 10, and 16. I'm also aware that we need to table item number 21 and move it to a future agenda. Okay? So, can I get a motion concerning the consent?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus seven, 10, 16, and 21.
Minus seven, 10, and 16 for the, to be moved to the regular agenda and for 21 to be tabled to a future agenda.
Exactly.
Okay?
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you. Let me call for that vote, then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That being done, let me open this up for further comment from council. Public comment? Okay. In that case, let me move us into our special agenda. Today, we have a consideration of adopting an order canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the election held May 11th, 2013, and calling for a runoff election on June the 15th, 2013. This is not a normal process, so you're going to see me do a lot of reading on this to make sure I at least make a good run at doing it correctly. An order of the City of San Angelo, Texas canvassing returns of a general election held in said city on the 11th day of May, 2013, for the purpose of electing municipal officers, and a special election held in said city on the 11th day of May, 2013, for the purpose of electing municipal officers to fill vacancies for unexpired terms, declaring results of the general election and special election, calling for a runoff election to be held on June the 15th, 2013, for the purposes of electing a mayor to fill the mayor's seat, and a council member to fill the vacancy in single-member district seat one, and a council member to fill the vacancy in single-member district seat five, providing a severability clause and providing for an effective date. Do you want to make a presentation?
Yes, Mayor. Would you like to read the results of the election?
You bet. Okay. At this time, I'll introduce the results of the election, and I will read through them, and we'll see if there are any questions from, from council members and any desire to have me go into any precincts or any of that kind of thing. Okay? So, what we have, we have, in the mayor race, Kendall Hirschfeld received 2,919 votes, or 39.48 percent. Dwayne Morrison received 2,295 votes, or 31.04 percent. Paul Alexander received 2,180 votes, or 29.48 percent. There were a total of 7,394 votes. In single-member district two, Jim Turner received 143 votes, or 14.17 percent. Marty Self received 675 votes, or 66.90 percent. Joseph Grimes received 191 votes, or 18.93 percent. There were a total of 1,009 votes. In single-member district four, Sally Francis Ayana received 278 votes, or 43.03 percent. Don Vardaman received 368 votes, or 56.97 percent. There were a total of 646 votes. In single-member district six, Don Barnhart received 491 votes, or 28.87 percent. Charlotte Farmer received 1,117 votes, 65.67 percent. Anita Guy received 93 votes, or 5.47 percent. There were 1,700 total votes in that single-member district. In each case, in these three, in these cases, for the district two, district four, and district six, a clear majority winner was chosen. In the other cases, including the mayor's race, we will move to runoff. So, let me read this. Pursuant to the applicable provisions of the Texas Local Government Code, Texas Election Code, and the City of San Angelo, Texas Home Rule Charter, the city council officially finds and determines and declares the results of said general election to be that Marty Self is elected council member for district two to a two-year term of office by a majority vote of the voters. And Don Vardaman is elected council member for district four to a two-year term of office by majority vote of the voters. And Charlotte Farmer is elected council member for district six to a two-year term of office by a majority of the voters. And, under section six, it is therefore found that no candidate for the mayor of office, for the office of mayor, received a majority of the votes cast for that office, and that the following two candidates for office of mayor received the highest and second-highest number of votes for the office of mayor to wit, Kendall Hirschfeld and Dwayne Morrison. Therefore, it is ordered and declared that a runoff election shall be held on June the 15th, 2013, at which the candidates shall be candidates having received the highest and second-highest number of votes for the office of mayor. What would you like to see? Just keep moving?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Section seven. Pursuant to the, to the applicable provisions of the Texas Local Government Code, Texas Election Code, and the City of San Angelo, Texas Home Rule Charter, the city council officially finds and determines and declares the results of said special election to be that, in single-member district one, Trinidad Aguirre Jr. received 693 votes, or 37.83 percent. Bill Richardson received 277 votes, or 15.12 percent. Robert Bankster Sr. received 66 votes, or 3.6 percent. Rodney Fleming received 796 votes, or 43.45 percent. There were 1,832 voters. In single-member district five, Barbara Pratt received 167 votes, or 11.12 percent. H.R. Winkie Wardlaw III received 653 votes, or 43.48 percent. David McBride received 603 votes, or 40.15 percent. Barry Gamble received 79 votes, or 5.26 percent. There were a total of 1,502 votes. Under section eight, it is therefore found that no candidate for council member, single-member district one, or council member, single district, single-member district five, received the majority of the votes cast for the office for which he was a candidate, and that the following candidates received the highest and second-highest number of votes for the respective offices for which they were candidates, to wit, single-member district one, Trinidad Aguirre Jr., Rodney Fleming. Single-member district five, H.R. Winkie Wardlaw III, and David McBride.
Just that's the last paragraph. The last paragraph.
Okay. Therefore, it is ordered and declared that a runoff election shall be held on June the 15th, 2013, at which the candidates shall be candidate, shall be candidates having received the highest and second-highest number of votes for the respective offices, to wit, council member for single-member district one and council member for single-member district five. I'm looking, do you, do you need me to move to the, any of the other items? I guess I'm looking for this canvas. We'll do that in a moment.
Actually, you've done that part. You've ordered the runoff election. So, now we need a motion to adopt the order.
Yeah. Take the two motions.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Let me ask at this time for a motion, and this is assuming that the results I just read meet your approval. Okay? So, if you don't need me to dig into the results further than I did, I need, I need a motion.
Second.
Okay? I have a motion to approve, and here's what I'm looking for.
I didn't say the motion.
I got one. Looking for, for, I'm going to need two, and I want to make sure that I get, get you to do both of them.
It's on the first page.
Is this on the resolution?
May I have a motion to accept the findings and adopt the order? Okay? So, move.
I have a motion.
And a second. Okay. So, I have a motion and a second to accept and find, and adopt the order. Do I have any questions on this? Let me call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution calling for the runoff election on June the 15th, 2013?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Silva and Ms. Farmer. Okay. Do I have any question on the call, on this before I make a call? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
We're ready to do the honors.
It is hereby declared to be the intention of the city council that we would move to the, to a special election on June the 15th and accept, at this time, the results of the May 11th election for those who were reelected with majority vote. Okay? I'm going to follow Ms. Ramirez in the process of walking through, introducing new folks and appreciating old folks, so.
Judge Gilbert will be administering the oath of office to Mr. Vardaman and Mr. Self.
Mr. Ramirez, do you need a mayor? Okay, up here, you want me to come down there? Here I come.
My Venus is on the way. Good morning.
All right, Marty, if you'll raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Marty Self.
I, Marty Self.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the, duty of the office.
For the city council, single-member district two.
Of the single, of the city council, single-member district two.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on the 11th day of May, 2013, Marty Self was duly elected a council member for single-member district two. In testimony thereof, I have heretofore signed my name and caused the seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed. This is the 21st day of May, 2013. Welcome up, Lawrence. Do you want to? Remember where I put those dead gum things?
Mr. Self, you may now take your seat on the dais.
Pardon me?
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you. Don, if you'll raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Don Vardaman.
I, Don Vardaman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of San Angelo City Council, single-member district four.
Of San Angelo City Council, single-member district four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. And as before, this, this is a certificate of election for the city of San Angelo.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on the 11th day of May, 2013, Don Vardaman was duly, was duly elected council member, single-member district four. In testimony thereof, I have heretofore signed my name and caused the city, the seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed. This, the 21st day of May, 2013. Congratulations. Thank you. You want to come down? Do you want to come down? What would you like? Sure.
Do solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute the duties. That I will faithfully execute the duties. Of the office of the San Angelo City Council. Of the office of the San Angelo City Council. Single-member district six. Single-member district six. Of the state of Texas. Of the state of Texas. And will to the best of my ability preserve. And to, will to the best of my ability preserve. Protect and defend. Protect and defend. The Constitution and the laws of the United States. The Constitution and the laws of the United States. And of this state. And of this state. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations, Mrs. Farmer. Thank you.
Can you get a picture with us?
Oh, sure.
All right. I don't think that's exactly how that should go. The certificate of election, the city of San Angelo. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on the 11th day of May, 2013, Charlotte Farmer was duly elected council member, single-member district six. In testimony whereof, I have heretofore signed my name and caused the seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed. This, the 21st day of May, 2013. Do you want one of those? Do what? Let me help you. Mr. Morrison, would you join me, please, sir?
Mr. Morrison, thank you very much for 10 years of service to the people of San Angelo and to single-member district two, and thank you for taking the opportunity and running for mayor and for being of service to the city. I appreciate you for everything you've done and have enjoyed working on the council with you. And we'd like to present you with this plaque for your service. As the seal of the city of San Angelo is presented to Dwayne Morrison, city council member, single-member district two, May 2003 to May 2013, in grateful recognition of dedicated service, service to the city of San Angelo. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
And I would like to say thank you. I have served district two for the last 10 years. I've made a lot of mistakes. I've made some decisions that I still sleep with. I've made some decisions that haunt me, but most of the decisions and all the decisions that I have made, I have made thinking it was the very best thing for my constituents. And I have worked hard, and I have done the very best of my ability to serve the constituents that honored me and put me in the position to represent them, and I am very thankful to each and every one of them. I have earned their respect. I have earned their loyalty, and I did that because I tried to be as respectful and loyal to them as I could be. So, it's been a good ride. It's been a good ride. I've enjoyed it, and I plan on being back on the 15th. Thank you.
Folks, what I'd like to do at this time is start with our new council member, Marty Self, and allow him to introduce himself and introduce any special guests.
Well, I'm Marty Self, and I had fun running, and I look forward to serving the constituents of single-member district two. I would like to just point out a few of my special guests. My number-one supporter, my wife, Patty, and my, my son and daughter-in-law, Joe and Riley. And if you don't have grandkids, you need to get them, because I have two great-granddaughters, Taylee and Tagan. And then I have some very, very dear friends that helped me a lot in my campaign, Tommy Hebert and Carol Rigby, and a couple that's almost like my mom and dad now to me, Ken and Brenda Cook. And then the two hardest-working supporters on my campaign was my campaign treasurer, Dan Baker, and the Frank White, who probably worked harder than anyone. So, I'd like to recognize those, those individuals, too. And then the one that makes me say the right things, my pastor from Emmanuel Baptist Church, Tommy Richardson.
I thought that was going to be your wife. Okay.
She's the one that scolds me.
Okay. Outstanding. I'd like to introduce our, our new member from single-member district four, Mr. Don Vardaman, and ask him to introduce himself and anyone he'd like to introduce.
I'm Don Vardaman, and I... I'm proud to serve the city of San Angelo. I feel like I served him for 30-plus years as, in the fire marshal's office, and, and this is a great honor, being elected. I was elected as a school board trustee, and, and that was also a great honor. I look forward to serving the city. I look forward to, to taking on the tough issues and, and being truthful and honest and, and us doing the, the best thing that we possibly can for the city. I have my fiancee, Desiree Bishop, who will be my wife the 31st of this month. Our, our pastor, Tommy Richardson, who will be marrying us the 31st of this month. Good friend, John Kahn, and partner in a business that we have. And Frank White, who was my speech teacher, don't hold that against him, but Frank was, was with me when I ran for school board and had dark hair, so it's, it's been a long journey. And then, of course, Judge Gilbert, Judge Gilbert has, has sworn at me for 30 years. He, he swore me in as, as a peace officer and investigator. He swore me in as fire marshal. He swore me in as city marshal, and he's still swearing at me. I just, I'm so sorry, but they really have kept me going and done a lot of work for me.
I was wondering if...
Well, you know, I just, I didn't see them, looking right at them and didn't see them. Just the way it is out West.
She's...
My friend on the back wall in the yellow shirt? That's my son, Don Sharp. He and Joe Spano have escorted me around and been my driver and buggy mover and all of the good... I'm sure glad that... To know that they're glad that I'm walking again.
Outstanding. Okay. At this time, what we'd like to do is consider the appointment of a mayor pro tem for the 2013 city council. So, let me see what... We have, you know, we have only been with a mayor pro tem for a short period of time, but this is a new day. So, let's see what the group would like to do.
Just kind of with the new guys that are coming onboard is, what we've done is, we've, I think in the past, we've kind of been passing it around, just passing the torch, and I think that's worked quite well for what's gone around, so maybe considering, you know, continuing that on, and...
I'll make a motion that Charlotte Farmer is the new mayor pro tem since we're torch passing.
Okay. I heard the motion, but I didn't hear the last part of what you said, Mr. Vardeman.
Since we're torch passing.
Torch passing. Okay. Outstanding.
And I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second that Charlotte be the mayor pro tem for the coming year. Do I have any other discussion up here? All right, let me call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. At this time, welcome back to the mayor pro tem position. I hope you have fun.
Yeah, I believe it.
I'm gonna be absent from this point forward. I hope you enjoy yourself.
I can sign too.
Okay. Outstanding. Let's at this time take a break, and we'll spend about 30 minutes in our reception where we welcome these folks aboard and thank members for their service, and then we'll reconvene and start with our regular agenda. Okay, good morning. Let me call the meeting back to order, and let me start us off this morning on our regular agenda. We'll be starting with an item pulled from the consent agenda. This is item number seven, consideration of rejecting all bids submitted under the request for bids for ferrot chloride.
Yes, sir. I've gotten my answer since then, but if you... What I was curious is about, I thought we had just approved this and was curious as to why you were rejecting it.
No, that was a polymer that we just approved. This is a ferrot chloride. It's a different chemical used at the water treatment plant, and we were... One of the bidders had made a mistake, and we wanted to rebid the item to make sure that we got the best price for the city, so we're rejecting these current bids and we'll rebid this product.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve and a second. Any question from council? Call for this vote, then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move then to item number 10, also pulled from the consent agenda. This is consideration of adopting a resolution amending the authorized representative for Texpool and Investment Service for Public Funds, and...
Mr. Mayor, I pulled it also because I was not familiar with the name or had seen it before, and if Michael could just tell us, I'd appreciate it.
Texpool is a local government investment co-op, and we invest monies there overnight. It helps us with our rate of return without compromising, to a great degree, liquidity. And so, it's a pool that we've participated in for years and years, and we're just changing...
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. Do I have questions from council? I'll call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's move on into item number 16.
Item 16 was the... The way it read on the agenda that I have in my hand was hearing in consideration. It did not say second hearing, and that kind of bothered me, and I just checked with HA, and it does say second hearing in my computer, and the new agenda that was published or put out this morning does say second hearing, so that took care of my question. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this item. Again, any question from council? All right, call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, outstanding. Let's move forward then to a regular agenda item number 18. This is a presentation of the first quarter 2013 report from the Chamber of Commerce for Economic Development, from the Economic Development Council. Good morning, sir. We have our vice president for economic development at the chamber is John Dugan.
Good morning, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here on this day and with our new council members. I'm John Dugan. I do marketing and recruitment for the chamber through contracts with Costa DC, funding sources are also county and the chamber itself through the cornerstone fund, just to kind of bring you guys up to where we are on that. You've got a fairly extensive packet from me you will look through. It's got quite a bit of information, it's got some advertising that we've done on this quarter, and this is the quarter that covers January through March 2013. We're always a couple of months behind when we do these reports, just to give you an idea of kind of where we are. We also did the update and copied you on the community profile pages. Those have been updated for 2013 numbers, and we're continuing to look at those because things are changing so dramatically demographically, and we'll continue to update those, probably do another update in June as well. This is part of our marketing piece that we use to answer questions for the companies that are there. If... I'm sorry.
Where do you grab that data?
From all over. We pull it from the state, we pull it from the Census Bureau, we look at the local reports that are coming through, you know, sales tax comes in, you've got your larger employers in those numbers. We go directly to them, and it's a lot of canvassing. HOPE does a lot of background work on that to get that done. It takes several weeks to get the information put together to do the updates.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. The... On top of your packet, you'll see a memorandum, and the last couple of quarters, we've been trying to do those to give you kind of a synopsis of what is a good snapshot of what's going on kind of right now as well. You've got all the background information over the last three months, but the memorandum kind of gives you some of the things that we're doing specifically. Through that period, we worked with about 12 different companies, eight of which are oil-related, which, as you know with what's going on, we're seeing a lot of oil-related companies interested in the community, and we're moving forward with several of those. We've got three that we think will make a decision by the end of the quarter. We are moving in discussions with them in various stages. You guys have heard a little bit about some of what we're doing with them because of the real estate that we're looking at. We're still working with some of those companies. We've lost one, but we think we're gonna be able to retain that one in the community, just not necessarily in the business park. So, we're continuing to work with those, and hopefully we'll get some resolution. I know that we've got one going to Costa DC tomorrow to have some discussion, so working hard with that.
John, I have a quick question on those.
Yes, sir.
On the companies that you're working with, are you seeking them out, or are they coming to us?
Both.
And if they are coming to us, what's bringing them here?
Well, with what's going on in Klein Shell, and that's actually... Was gonna talk a little bit about what's going on there, because that's one of the big issues that we're working on right now. The Klein Shell Consortium will have actually its inaugural meeting on Thursday in Abilene. We have a regional group that we have put together to try to address the issues that we know are coming because of what's going on in the oil field. We are looking at housing issues, we're looking at education, we're looking at workforce, we're looking at all the different aspects. We have been talking and working with the folks from Eagle Ford, because they've been going through this since 2005, when those first wells were dug, and we're continuing to talk with them. Back to your question, most of the oil-related companies are coming either through companies that are already here and being referred, or they're simply coming through the community and want to be proximity-wise, close to the shell as they can get. We're seeing a lot of play right now from some Houston companies who are already in Eagle Ford, which is south of us, and they're looking at moving up into the Permian Basin. So, because of that, logistically, we're in a good spot. Also, if you think about it from a Klein Shell aspect and where it sits, along with the Permian Basin, you've really got three metropolitan areas. You have Abilene, you have San Angelo to the south, and then you have the middle and Odessa area. If they want to be in one of those areas, middle and Odessa is not the place to be right now with what's going on over there. Abilene's a little bit further east, but they're seeing some play as well, but San Angelo, logistically, is a good move, so we're in a good position from that standpoint, and it's bringing in a lot of conversations. The other thing that we are seeing right now is developers. I have been meeting with commercial and residential developers for the last two months, and they just literally are coming through the community looking for opportunities. You know, I think we're seeing building begin to move forward. We're already seeing some crunch in the housing market with what's going on, according to the realtors that I'm talking to, and so we're trying to get through the consortium and preparation setup. Right now, we're looking at doing a study through UTSA, very similar to what Eagle Ford has done. They did it after the fact, but it's a lot of really good information, and we hope will give us some projections. We've been working as a group with workforce here, workforce in Abilene, our chambers are working on it, a lot of our smaller communities are working toward that, and we're trying to get that funded and get that information out. One of my biggest issues right now when I'm talking to these companies, and especially when I'm talking to the commercial groups, the folks that are looking at retail, those types of things, they're looking for numbers, and our demographics have not caught up with that yet. We know all the traffic going through, we're seeing increases in sales tax, we're seeing all of those things, but with the census, the way it gathers information, we're still a little bit behind, and so we think that by moving forward with this study, we'll get a lot of information that we can use to help attract some of these folks into the community and to give them some reasons to be here as well.
So, your non-oil-related are the developers and the retailers?
We're seeing those. I'm also working with a couple of other companies that are manufacturers, they're just... They're not related at all, and those are kind of ongoing. And we're, of course, working with our local businesses as well, because we know that there are gonna be some issues there. We're already seeing some employment issues going on, and we're trying to help with some training, and we're working with all our partners to make sure that we, as a community, address the situation that we're going to be in as we go forward, and try to address those issues and try to get... And quite frankly, I don't know that you can get out in front of them once they start, but at least to try to be prepared with what we know is gonna be going forward.
John?
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding those demographics and numbers?
Yes.
The... I'm on the housing committee that's working on temporary housing, et cetera.
Right.
And one thing we need to do is make sure, and I made this clear to the committee, and I want to make it... Let the rest of the council know right now while I can say this in public and let you know, that I want and I asked for, and hopefully this happens, I want numbers every month, very accurate numbers of where we are in population, who's moved in that month, and then the next month, as fast as possible, get it out so that...
Right.
Because if developers have the information or investors, if they have the information, they'll make the investment. If it's vague and it's last year's information, they won't do it. So, it costs us all.
That would be very helpful to us, and that's one of the things that we're striving to find. It's just the information is just not coming through at this point in any of the resources that we're normally using.
So, and the city will be involved in the consortium also.
Yes, exactly.
Of course, I'll be in Abilene on Thursday, too.
Right.
But the thing is, you're running the money. Basically, what we hear from the developers, builders, is that they need more information.
They do.
Before they can invest here, they need to make sure that the information they have is good information, so that's... We're running the money. I think that even more frequently than once a month, as we gather information, we'll update the website on that, too.
Well, and part of this study will help with, at least with the projections on that, and will help update that as well. And these are the folks that do a lot of good demographics, so we're looking forward to being able to get to that.
In a fast-moving time, who do you work with on... At the city on an ongoing basis so that...
Bob Schneeman, for the most part. I work directly with Bob on most of our resources. Remember, I mean, I'm the guy that kind of tries to bring these guys in and date them and bring them in, but from a standpoint of actually finalizing, it goes through...
There's a housing committee.
Sure.
There's a housing committee, and there's a...
Mm-hmm.
All I'm doing right now is making sure that I encourage a lot of communication so we don't have these left-hand... Here's the left-hand, and it's trying to do stuff on housing.
Exactly.
And here's the right-hand, and it's trying to do stuff on economic development, and they're not talking at all to each other.
Exactly.
And next thing you know, we've got a train wreck, because one guy's doing stuff the other guy's doing. And so, I'm wanting to make sure then through Mr. Schneeman and through his reporting structure and through, you know, Mr. Valenzuela, that we keep a cohesive effort going, and when they're moving fast, communication's more difficult.
And that's one reason we've...
And more critical.
Of course. That's one reason we've developed the consortium and have been working so hard to get everyone together, because this is a much bigger issue than just San Angelo. This is a regional issue, and that's why we're trying to work on a regional basis to address those issues. We'll have a specific group that will work locally on this, that will be a subsection of the consortium, but we also need to work with those partners. You know, I was talking to an economic developer the other night from one of our other communities, and he made a point that I think is very correct. Usually with economic development, there are winners and losers. I'm after a business, someone else is after a business, it goes one place or the other. There is so much business to be had right now that everyone is gonna be a winner within the region, but we still have to address all of the issues that are going to happen. The increases in school population and how that will affect the need for workforce and the need for very specific types of training, which our community college is working toward and ASU is working toward. We've got all those partners in line and working with us on this to develop this plan and move forward. So, that's a big part of what we've really been working toward, because it's been taking so much time.
Well, let me ask you this. You know, we're talking about Klein Shell and increase. Do we have a rough idea of how much our population has increased? Do we... Are we seeing... Where do we get that information from?
We're not seeing it yet. We're not seeing those numbers yet, that's what I was saying. That's the problem, because we're not really seeing the projections yet. It's my understanding in June, we'll get probably some projections from the census, but I don't know if it's going to be developed over our historical or whether they're actually going to be looking and taking samplings. And so, that's one of the reasons, again, we're trying to do this study, because we think that that will help us to look at that impact and look at some of those numbers to get a better idea of what's going forward. Ray Perryman, who is kind of the economic development guru for Texas, has put out a couple of reports. He is saying that through this process, we'll grow about 6,000. I've heard more than that, so, you know, right now it's up in the air and we're not seeing the numbers that we need. We're still too new to... Into it. You know, one of the issues that I'm seeing from a standpoint of real estate is I'm being told by the realtors that they're getting multiple bids on houses right now, but unfortunately, what's going on is the appraisals aren't catching up fast enough with the new price on the housing, so they're having trouble with financing once that's done. It's the same thing with all of these numbers. We're moving so swiftly through this that it's not catching up with us yet, so we're working very hard to try to look through that and figure out how to do it. Any other questions on Klein?
Okay.
Again, as I said, I've been working also with the local companies and trying to make sure that those are being done. We are also working diligently to try to make sure that we are continuing with a strategic plan. We are working toward that. I'll be in San Antonio next week. We've got a contingency from Mexico coming up, and I was invited by Texas One to be part of that, and we're gonna be doing a dinner for them, so we're still working in all of those directions. I was... We worked through and were represented with the World Ag Show again this year, and we're continuing to do that. So, all of the other things that we're working with, including real estate, commercial, hotels, and all of those things, and Pamela will be telling you more about the tourism piece before all this is done, so I won't step on that. I'm also working on a regional basis, again, still with TMCN. that that will help us to look at that impact and look at some of those numbers to get a better idea of what's going forward. Ray Perryman, who is kind of the economic development guru for Texas, has put out a couple of reports. He is saying that through this process, we'll grow about 6,000. I've heard more than that. So, you know, right now it's up in the air and we're not seeing the numbers that we need. We're still too new to, into it. You know, one of the issues that I'm seeing from a standpoint of real estate is I'm being told by the realtors that they're getting multiple bids on houses right now, but unfortunately, what's going on is the appraisals aren't catching up fast enough with the new price on the housing, so they're having trouble with financing once that's done. It's the same thing with all of these numbers. We're moving so swiftly through this that it's not catching up with us yet. So we're working very hard to try to look through that and figure out how to do it. Any other questions on Klein? Again, as I said, I've been working also with the local companies and trying to make sure that those are being done. We are also working diligently to try to make sure that we are continuing with a strategic plan, we are working toward that. I'll be in San Antonio next week. We've got a contingency from Mexico coming up, and I was invited by Texas One to be part of that, and we're going to be doing a dinner for them. So we're still working in all of those directions. I was, we worked through and were represented with the World Ag Show again this year, and we're continuing to do that. So all of the other things that we're working with, including real estate, commercial, hotels, and all of those things, and Pamela will be telling you more about the tourism piece before all this is done, so I won't step on that. I'm also working on a regional basis, again, still with TMCN. Through this period, we were in Austin, talking with legislators, working on the very specific things that we are concerned about within our communities and are continuing to support that as well. And we're going to need that from a community-wide basis as we go forward with this because of what's going to be happening with roads and water and all of those things. So we appreciate all the hard work the council's been doing in moving forward with that. The other thing we did during this quarter is our annual Economic Development Awards. We presented five of those this year at a luncheon, and what I will tell you from that standpoint, and I was very pleased with, these were five outstanding companies that have made great progress in the last year, but we got an additional large group of nominees that were very well-deserving either. I was very grateful that though I, I kind of sit with that committee, I don't make that decision on who wins the awards because we've got a lot of businesses that are growing very rapidly within our community, and it's really good to see those numbers coming through. That being said, I won't take up more of your time unless you've got other questions that I can help with.
I just want to hear one thing.
Okay.
When I look at what's going on and lots of oil industry businesses coming in, I think to myself, boy, we need to be diversifying if we can. And so if there's a tie, it goes to the other non-oil industry company. Make sure, you know, we want as many coming in here as possible.
Right.
Because this, I mean, it's just, we've been a diversified community for a long time, very balanced, and that's a plus for San Angelo.
Well, in...
How do you see that?
Living through, I mean, I've lived my life in West Texas. I'm from a little further north, we don't talk about that particular community here, but I'm from an area that has been very dependent on oil. I was a banker through the eighties, and if you remember what happened during that time, when the oil busted, we all busted with it. What we found out in our community a little further north is we were way too tied to oil and gas, and we had to continue that diversification, and they've done a good job. San Angelo's always done a good job with that. I'm working, not only, as I said, with the strategic plan, still trying to hit all of those target industries we're working toward, but we've got a couple of others that we've got, that we've been working toward. No bites yet, but, you know, they're, because of what's going on legislatively, Texas looks really good for anything connected with guns.
Right.
And we're working towards some of those companies.
Right.
Because some are very dissatisfied where they are, and so we're making those contacts and moving forward. We're continuing to work outside the oil realm, but you take what you can get at this point, and we've got some really good companies looking at us, and it's going to create a lot of, a lot of jobs and a lot of capital investment within our community, and it's going to be, we're going to have a good time for a little while.
And I'd like to hear the strategic plan. We spent $75,000 on it. It was very good, had a lot of details in it, a lot of things we can aim for. When, council, we don't want to drop the focus on that strategic plan, the new council members, you need to get a copy of that and check it out, what it says and et cetera. Is that online? Do we have it online? Is it, Advanced San Angelo, we've talked about that.
Yeah. It's on the Costa DC website.
Okay.
And I've got a connection to it as well on my website.
All right. All right. Let's not forget about the Advanced San Angelo website. They suggested that?
We're actually working toward that. Bob and I had a meeting about it yesterday, and we have put together and we think we've got the logo that we need, and we're working with Steve McLaughlin to do some finalization.
And then that's another coordination issue, that the housing information is also an advance. We need one spot for everybody to go to, and that's what the economic development, it was Angelo Economics said to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Bob?
Oh.
Hi. Mr. Schneeman, why don't you, just because it would be the best thing to do, why don't you go ahead and email our two members with the actual link?
I'd be happy to do that.
Give them the link and let them...
Send it to the whole council if anybody...
Send it to the whole council.
Make it easy, let them, let them take a, let them get on the link and see what's there and print it if they want it and keep hold of it or whatever, but just make it easy for them, don't make them go look for it.
We certainly do that. Yes, we also will have a, next month, I'm about a month behind on it, but next month we'll also have the annual report, Costa DC Annual Report to the council. So, and then I'll have a lot of that information in it as well. I was going to point out one thing on the statistics, as far as our population growth and that sort of thing. A lot of the bigger cities, there are companies that make a living doing that sort of thing. They do housing studies, housing projections, and that sort of thing. We're not a big enough metropolitan statistical area where they come and do that for profit unless we hire them. So that's one of the problems that we're running into. Metro Studies is one that I know of, and when I was in land development, I relied very heavily on that as far as what the housing projection was going to be, how many lots we were going to create over the next year. That's something we don't have here, and it may be worth investigating whether or not we can get somebody to do that if it's on, maybe on a fee basis to provide some of the statistics.
Okay. One of the things I did, just in my former life, was, one of the things that we can do is just look at the number of water meters that are being turned on or, you know, and all those kinds of things, so you can get something there. The other, the other two groups that I would be spending energy with is the Apartment Association and what they're, because they can let you know what's going on with their rate of...
Realtors work.
That's the third group.
Workforce, workforce has good job numbers as far as job creation.
But as far as trying to stay in front of, because you're talking about how all these numbers come well behind, and as far as trying to stay in front of, it's, you know, talking to the school district about how many people are signing up to go to school. It's talking about how many water meters are being turned on that haven't been turned on, and it's talking to apartment complexes or the association and realtors to have some understanding of what's going on there. And that's about, as far as trying to get numbers as they happen, that's about as good as it gets.
I've said this a lot, and a statistician can correlate those numbers to a range that we have between this many and this many citizens here, based on the numbers and with a 95% confidence and et cetera. And that's what they want to know.
Unfortunately, the Apartment Association does these occupancy ratios monthly. So, I mean, they can...
We can present those numbers, what we can't present necessarily is a statistical analysis of those numbers, which a lot of, a lot of investors are looking at, they're looking for, what does this really mean? And that's the part that, because we don't have statisticians on staff, we can't do that for them.
But we do have groups that'll be working with us, the Housing Committee, we do have realtors, we do have the Apartment Association, we do have that information also, so...
That's the thing, I was talking about left hand and right hand.
Correct.
Just wanting you to get information as quickly as possible back and forth and...
But I heard what you said. I'll carry that forward and work on that.
Okay. At this time, then, let me invite our CVB Vice President Pamela Miller up for a convention and Visitors Bureau presentation.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the new city council, folks. Great to have you here. I'm reporting on the first quarter, January through March, and that is always a really busy quarter for us. It's the month when we kick off a lot of business with the world's greatest horsemen, go into slack, and ride into rodeo. So a lot of business right at the front part of the year. At the end of March, our year-to-date occupancy was up again, 16%, and our average daily rate, 15%. I did just yesterday get the report that took us through April, which our year-to-date is at 16.4% on occupancy, and our average daily rate is actually up 18.8%. That makes 28 consecutive months that both our occupancy and our average daily rate have been up. So every month when I get the report, I'm assuming we're going to get to a plateau, but that has not been happening. We were very busy with the rodeo business and the horsemen.
While you're on hotels, what do you know about hotel activity? What, in other words, do you know anything about floors on a hotel that are being renovated that are going to add space? Do you know about anything where you know someone is about to build, other than, like we know from our activity that there's one on 14th Street, we don't know the timing on it, but I'm just asking you what you know and see if there's anything that you educate us on on that.
I can say that there are five to eight hotel properties that I know of that are wanting to come here. I consistently send emails to planning to find out if they've gone to the permit stage yet, and we don't have anybody at permit stage. We do have the one announcement for the one that you just, that you just talked about, but we do have a need for additional hotel rates. What we really need to do is try to bring the price back down because that, the average daily rate is up, and that is making it difficult to sell sports business. They want a $70 or an $80 room rate, making it a little bit tougher to get convention business because they don't want to pay that rate. And so if we get some more properties, that's going to, it's all about supply and demand, and of course, that'll bring our price down a little bit.
Thank you.
During the first quarter, we assisted with 17 different conventions, meetings, sporting events, or motor coach tours. We had a projected attendance of 21,954 people and 3,602 room nights. The average length of days spent was 3.5. That's up a little bit. Those of you that see this every quarter know we're usually at two or two and a half. A big reason for that is really the celebration of champions because that is a 10-day event. Total economic impact for the quarter, $5,571,496.
Pamela, let me ask you, on the 17 conventions, was it a pretty smooth transition as far as available rooms, or did we struggle, or...
No, we were okay. We, everybody was worried about rodeo, that we had rooms. We did have rooms. We were not sold out. We, they weren't necessarily the prices that people wanted to pay for the rooms, but we were, yeah, yeah. And we are consistently getting complaints about room rates in our city.
I went to Houston for an event about three weeks ago, and it was $299 for a Hampton Inn. So, and it was because of a conference in town, so, I mean, things just happen when there's supply and demand. Sometimes prices get pretty darn high, I'm glad we're not there, so...
I just went to the county judges, and we're bringing that here next year, so we had to set up there this year. And I called four hotels, three of them were over $300 per night, and the one I ended up getting was 200 a night. So it's not just us, it's really, this whole region is having that same problem.
I got in trouble for being a vagrant, sleeping in my car.
In February, we participated in Converge on the Capitol in Austin, and that's really our legislative day for the tourism industry, the hotel industry, the CVBs, and we go meet with our legislators and we talk about what our issues are. And there were about 1,000 of us, we had a really good turnout. Probably our biggest issue this year that we're fighting for is the school start date. Texas claims that they lose $5 million a day in state tax for, when a kid is back to school, basically, when it's not a summer travel season. So there's some legislation going on trying to move that date again, and that's what we're fighting the hardest for. Some site visits that we had this quarter included a remote control boat racers group that wants to do remote control races out on Lake Nazworthy. They say they're coming the first weekend in October, and we're just waiting to get our contract on that. We had a group from Hardin Simmons, it was a marketing group that came down and studied our area. They are putting together a marketing plan for the Texas Sports Trail, as this is an anniversary year for them. We also had filming of two San Angelo commercials for Texas Country Reporter. I don't know if any of you watch that program, but starting in May, we have been a top Texas town, and we will be through October. That is an advertising opportunity, that's not a designation, but there's a lot of good things that come with that, so, including him coming here and doing another story on San Angelo. We did full servicing, and what I mean by full servicing is when a group comes in, we help them put together the itinerary, we help them find hotel rooms, we tell them what to do in their spare time, we get a meal cost, we do their transportation, really put the whole conference together for them. And we did that full servicing for Ports to Plains, Mexico Trade Task Force, Texas Wildlife Association, Texas Jewish Historical Society, and Texas High School Athletic Directors. We attended trade shows at the American Bus Association Convention in Orlando, and those are motor coach operators from across the United States. So companies like Dan Diaper Tours, or American Journeys, bus tours. We also went with the others, many other CVBs across Texas, on a Texas media mission to New York City, and we had a Texas event that we invited them to, plus had appointments. Some of my appointments were with Family Circle, Travel and Leisure, The Knot, AAA, Food and Wine, New York Times, and Bird and Blooms. Advertising that we did this quarter included Texas Town and Country, they do a tourism edition, Ride Texas, Texas Highways, Texas Monthly, Texas Events Calendar, Sports Destination Management, Converge, which is a meeting planner international publication, Facebook and Google search. And we did give you a couple samples of some of our advertising, they are on pages 10 through 12 of your packet. On the...
Excuse me, very briefly, do you code these, so you can kind of do the leads and follow-up on those leads to determine how many actually came through on those advertisements?
We do, we keep track of, not every piece of advertising that we do has that component, the majority of it does. And so we do our CPUs, our cost per unit, how much it costs for that person to, you know, how many requests do we get for further information, basically. And also, our website is always on those ads, so a lot of folks go download the brochure off the website and don't even request that. But yeah, we do keep track of every one of those. And the budget is in your packet. We're doing very well on the budget, we're at 27% of our projected income for occupancy tax at the end of the first quarter. We only had one sports allocation this quarter, and it was $2,000 for the USSA baseball tournament, which was actually last weekend. And what the sports fund is, it's a budgeted amount that we have that people, different sports organizations fill out an application, tell us what their economic impact is going to be, and we have a group that is from all areas of sports across the city that evaluates these to decide if we're going to give them funds and how much we're going to give them. They also have to do, within 30 days of the event, a recap to give us what their final numbers were. So it's a great program, and it helps us bring additional sports events that we might not be able to bring to San Angelo. And then finally, it didn't happen this quarter, but it was the first part of April, and I'm excited about it, so I want to tell you today. We were able to book the Eastern Star Conference for, believe it or not, our first conference for 2016. But it's a big one for us, it's 1,400 people. So we were really excited to get that. It's four nights, and the best part is we won out against 12 other cities. So that's good news for us. Also in your packet...
Pamela, and what is that, Eastern Star?
Eastern Star, it's kind of the female part of Masons. It's the best way to evaluate that. And they look at communities where there is a Masonic temple. Of course, we have that.
Is there a conspiracy involved?
No, they actually, they really wanted a cowboy theme, the planner that's in charge this year, the chairman, and she loved it. We showed her ideas for the fort with the reenactors and just a lot of fun things, and they, our Coliseum was perfect for the setup that they have to have. So it was a good one. On the final pages of your packet, I just wanted to point out on page 17 through 20, all through last year, you heard me saying the top cities for visitation signing in the guestbook at the visitor center are Houston and San Antonio, which was great, that's what we were trying to reach. But this first quarter, we can obviously tell there's a lot of oil and gas going on because now our number one and two are again Midland-Odesa. San Antonio and Houston are still in our top seven, but that's kind of, Midland and Odessa are slots one and two, and then our international, Canada. So again, you can tell there's a lot of oil and gas. And on the back page, on page 20, I also wanted to point out, again, these are visitor guestbook sign-ins, and some of the folks tell us why they're here, not everybody, but those that do, generally, we don't get a lot of business people at the visitor center. They're here to do business and don't stop to necessarily pick up brochures. But you see, this quarter, it's higher than it has been, and I wanted to point out that their average stay was 31 days. And it's important to note that, as good as our occupancy... occupancy tax is doing, thirty-day or more stay in a hotel is exempt from paying hotel tax. So the Texas tourism industry and the Texas Lodging Association are actually not taking sides on a bill that's going into legislation this year on trying to repeal this because they can see both sides of the story. Originally, why we got it was because we wanted to get the snowbird business, those northerners that come south for the, the bad weather time. And there are thirty-seven other states that have some kind of an exemption for long-term stay. So that's why it was brought around. And also, it helps business. It might make somebody come here for a business venture rather than go somewhere else. So we don't know where that one goes, but talking about our legislative visit, nobody wants to take sides on that one. Are there any questions I can answer?
Mr. Hirschfeld?
I'm on page fifteen of your operating statement.
Uh huh.
And this is the expenses and it's about wayfind, wayfinding signage. Did y'all do some?
No. What we did is we had, we had a fund that several organizations contributed to that was to get a consultant to put together a plan to show us what we, what we should do in our community for wayfinding signage. And that funding is what paid for the consultant. We have just recently gone back to them right before Sean left and said, assume we could come up with, because I think everybody was kind of shocked by what the price was to do a wayfinding program. And we knew it would be a long-term process, three to five years, but it was in the millions. And so we said, let's assume we have three hundred thousand dollars to start it off, put together a plan to show us what that should be. And we've got that plan. In fact, AJ and I have a, a meeting this week to kind of talk about where we are with wayfinding. But that was to find out what it was we needed and then we'll need to find funds to try to move forward and do a wayfinding program. I do know that some of the signage at the airport, they are looking at the plan so that they try to tie in to what this plan is that we're trying to do. So what you see here is the funds that are left from all of those contributions towards that wayfinding consultant. And that'll be gone when we're done with paying the consultant bill this time around.
Okay. Okay. Further questions for or on the presentation? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move us now to item number nineteen. This is consideration of approving an amendment to the Vision Plan component of the San Angelo Comprehensive Plan that was adopted in 2009. This is specifically located between Forty-third Street to the north, Coliseum Drive to the east, Fortieth Street to the south, and Grape Creek Road and Chadburn Street to the west. And so we have a presentation by our interim director of Development Services, AJ Faber.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm going to ask Jeff Hints, our interim senior planner, to come up and walk through some of this with you. He's been in charge of, of the team and putting together this amendment and has done an excellent job. So I'd like him to talk about that with you. Just briefly to lay out what we're looking at today, as you're all aware, we looked at a couple of these on the last agenda. We are periodically getting requests to examine different portions of the Vision Plan. That Vision Plan, again, is our roadmap for growth in the city and Texas state law requires us to zone in accordance with that plan. And so as we've all discussed at various cases and events, this is a plan that needs to be constantly changing and reacting to how San Angelo is growing rather than a document that remains forever solidified even as the city moves on. And so what we've done is taken one of those requests. We've considered this with our Planning Commission, had some good discussion on that. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Hints to come forward and walk you through what staff has put together with the help of the Planning Commission and which, if approved today, would become a permanent part of the Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Loud enough?
Don't you guys think he did a great job choosing his wardrobe today?
Yeah, Johnny and I did the same thing, by the way. But y'all look better. The purple looks good.
We aim to please.
Does that say something about him or something about you?
Well, I mean, he's, he's like tight with Tony Romo, so I'm trying to, I'm just trying to be his friend.
Does he have anything? I was wondering if you were going to be an honorary planner for the day.
Does he have any other interesting thing he can say?
Mr. Hints, I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. I mean, we can, we can do Tony Romo stories or anything else. But the item on the agenda is actually a Vision Plan Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for the following area of the city. This is near the Coliseum. I'll get to some maps. But this is an area bounded by Short Street, to the south by Thirty-seventh Street, east by Columbia Street, and to the north by Forty-Fourth Street directly south of the Coliseum, north Chadburn Street by Sextus. And I'll get to a map, a map here. This is the current Vision Plan map. It's a portion of the Comprehensive Plan. The pink designation on here represents a neighborhood center which is intended for lower intensity commercial activities. It'll serve the surrounding neighborhoods which are shown by the yellow in the Vision Plan here. Neighborhood being, you know, apartments all the way to single-family residential. Neighborhood center being maybe apartments or higher-density residential designations. The light green on this being the rural designation for kind of lower-key and residential development. And the red being a more intensive commercial-type development. So this is the current Vision Plan map of the area. Staff took a look at this area. This is the current zoning of it. You can see it, there's a lot of CGCH zoning. That's a remnant that hasn't been a zoning district that's been eligible since the seventies. It's called C2 in the past. Right now, folks either choose general commercial or heavy commercial. This dual one is kind of a leftover. It's, it's a remainder. There's been a few cases in this one here. A gentleman was going to do some self-service warehouses and did general commercial there and removed some of his CGCH to do that. The property that's really in question here for the amendment later on is this particular property, part of the Bill Murray subdivision. And Mr. Murray is here today and I'm sure will like to speak to this matter as well. You know, there's, there was some analysis done. Staff spent about twenty hours going back to the fifties and looking at the ordinances in Mr. Murray's office to try and determine how this strip of zoning was placed in here and we have deemed it is, is accurate. The property, we found no evidence that it was ever wholly zoned commercial at any point. In the fifties and sixties, there were strips put into Chadburn Street at about three hundred feet on each side, which is why you've got lots that are zoned half one thing and maybe part another thing. We don't do that any longer. It's all the lot or none of the lot to avoid, you know, these issues where, you know, today he's got part of his property is zoned residential and the rest of it is commercial. So with that, that's just kind of a background about how staff was directed by Planning Commission to go ahead and take a look at the history of the property. Mr. Murray was looking at, at doing some commercial activities on this property and, you know, being contrary to the Vision Plan of, of neighborhood in this case, you know, potentially amending that vision to allow for some later commercial activities there. So in terms of the options, I'll get to what Planning Commission recommended. The council may approve what Planning Commission sent to council, remand that back to the Planning Commission for future discussion, or deny the proposed Vision Plans altogether. Staff recommended no changes. Planning Commission did recommend increasing, modifying the Vision Plan map for the neighborhood center designation on the block we discussed by a vote of five to one at the last meeting in April. And this is a land use map of the area. Staff did go out and do a field survey of the area, drove around and observed the actual land use patterns on the area. It's impossible to really plan for an area without, you know, knowing what's there and what the anticipated development patterns are. You'll find within the packet as well, I won't elaborate on this too much, the orange is this vacant residential property. The red is neighborhood-serving commercial-type establishments. There's a Stripe Station, which is the triangle. I know the mayor will be familiar with that, as well as this other commercial properties, both vacant and not vacant at this time. Here's an aerial photo of the area. You can see predominantly a lot of the area is undeveloped at this time. There's a lot of room for opportunities in this area. So the Vision Plan certainly encourages that. This is just an excerpt from the thoroughfare plan. There is a planned major arterial coming through here that would loop up to Chadburn Street again, which may help this area develop a little bit further in the future. The area around the Coliseum is already pretty much set in terms of thoroughfares. There's collector streets already in place in terms of being planned. They're not actually improved up to specifications at this time for actually accommodating that traffic. Anyone that's been to the Coliseum, you know, knows even if it's half-full, there's still even traffic issues. And during rodeo time, it's, you know, it's problematic at best at times. And that's certainly weighed into staff's recommendation to do, to leave that side residential. The neighborhood center's already located at a future key node, which is the goal of those. The street network in the area, as I've stated, really isn't fully improved at this time. There's known issues during events already. And this is a gateway to a major entertainment venue into the community, as Ms. Miller just elaborated. You know, a lot of folks come to town just to use the convention center. So we need to be careful about what's going on there and around it, of course. In terms of the present and anticipated development patterns of the area, we expect, you know, a lot of residential infill to occur and some commercial infill as well. This area has opportunities for that right now, that folks can come in and develop that property. And I've got a land use chart of the area for those that don't like maps and like charts better. We took a look at all the parcels. There were a hundred and sixty-one in that general area. And these are the classifications me and staff had gone out and observed. And it's broken down by parcels and by land area as well. As you can see, there's a lot of vacant commercial property already that was about twenty-one percent of the land area. So there's lots of opportunities in terms of adding more to that. The area has only about a hundred and seventy people living at it. We went ahead and pulled the census data for that particular study area and it's really lowly developed at this time. Maybe with the current influx of people, there's more folks, but at this time, it's only home to about two hundred people in that area. This is what the Planning Commission had proposed changing. I didn't match the pinks perfectly just so you could see, but this is what Planning Commission recommended to this council to do with the Vision Plan, to go ahead and make this entire block into a neighborhood center instead of the current residential configuration on the eastern portion of it now. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to try and address those.
Questions about the presentation?
Okay. And so the vote or the motion would be to go to this map if we want to approve what the Planning Commission said.
Correct.
Right? Remand it back to discuss, to tell them, well, we don't want to go to this map. We'd like you to rethink this a little bit and give them instruction or deny it. Those are kind of the three options that we have. So you can, you can make a motion to approve it as presented right here. You could make a motion to remand it back to them with some kind of direction for what you'd rather see, or you could just deny it and move on. So let me, let me start there. And staff has a slightly different read on it. So what is, what is your read compared to the Planning Commission's read very clearly and quickly stated?
Sure. In terms of the streets here, Forty-third and Coliseum Drive, they are defined as collector streets in the arterial plan. If they were fully improved to collector street standards, it probably wouldn't be as much of an issue. But in terms of even introducing some lower-intensity commercial businesses to an area that already has some traffic problems at this time, we see a little bit of a problem with that. It's not to say that, you know, that this council couldn't dedicate funding to fully improve those to collector street status, but I know that, you know, during budget time, you have a lot of polls on where the money's going to go and this may or may not be on that list right now. But, you know, in terms of introducing more traffic to an area that already has some problems, really our biggest concern.
Show me the Vision Plan that is in place right now.
I should have had that slide at the end. I apologize. This is the Vision Plan. Now it's calling for neighborhood-type development on this particular area into the Coliseum.
So it's really whether it's residential or turned into the neighborhood commercial?
Maybe lower-intensity commercial or higher-density residential. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, I have a, Mr. Hirschfield and then Mr. Alexander.
And this is going to go similar to the comments that I had at the last council meeting and I, and nothing personal, but I didn't really care for it because I was concerned about existing business. And that's why, you know, I kind of butchered up your, your plan and no offense, but, and that's one of the problems that I've got with this right here, whether this is, even with the portion of the existing, is that you've got, you go back, go to the other one that has the current land use?
Oh, the land use, okay.
Right there. And see, that's the problem I've got, is that you've already got an establishment of, an established businesses of commercial development in these sections. And, and I have a problem changing a vision. And I realize that the vision was, is already there, saying that the red probably is not in accordance with the vision. Am I correct in that statement?
Yeah, there's a few areas here that are zoned commercial right now that the vision is currently states that, you know, more rural or neighborhood-type development would be encouraged for those moving forward. You could certainly send that back.
But again, you've got some existing commercial business in spots that, that may not conform exactly to how the vision is currently laid out and being projected. Am I correct in that statement?
Yeah, there's a few there. Not, not too many, but there are a few. There's a few nightclubs and a couple like weather. There's a couple of industrial service-type businesses that are there now that don't generally conform to that. It's not saying they have to go away or close. They're allowed to continue forever as long as they don't change their zoning. But in terms of, you know, what the vision, it's a, you know, a twenty-five to fifty-year plan in terms of that. It's not like tomorrow or next week or anything. But in terms of the twenty-five to fifty-year growth, that's what this vision is really getting at.
Understand. My concern is that, again, I, I don't want to hurt existing businesses that are there and that, that is already located in that, that location and for them to be able to continue with their business and, and do, continue doing what they need to do to their existing business for it to do well.
Sure. No, I understand.
Right. Now, with that said, does that, does this change in the vision or does the change to neighborhood commercial affect, would it affect the current businesses that are in that area?
In terms of the area that was recommended for going to neighborhood center there, it's all residential at this time. There are no businesses there. The nearest business, this red one here, if you've driven up Coliseum Drive, there's a gravestone monument business. They're, you know, they're legally non-conforming at this point, but there are no commercial establishments on this lot. They're all residential. So one could look at it as maybe an opportunity for someone to do more commercial in this case.
And I guess I'm, I'm seeing for that entire block?
For the entire block? There's several here. There's a, a weather improvement center. I can look up in the, in the data in here, but there's several businesses that the neighborhood center would probably work for them. It's just those higher-intensity industrial uses that the CGCH zoning allows for now that really isn't compatible with the neighborhood center.
Let me, Jeff, I need you to go and show the current map, the current vision map, okay? There you go. Mr. Hirschfield, see the, they're already, I mean, the...
And I understand that. And I guess that, that's my point is that I'm...
You're not crazy about the current vision map?
I'm not crazy about the current one.
But it is...
And I don't know that, and I know that's what it is. And I, and I guess if we're going to change a portion of this, then, I mean, I just want to make sure that if we're changing it, we're changing it correctly.
Right.
So we're not hindering, again, exactly the discussion that we had last week, that we're not hindering a business that's currently in place.
Sure. No, understood. It wouldn't, you wouldn't be, only if they came in for a zone change and wanted to do something, you know, more intense with...
Their zone would, would stay exactly as it is.
Yeah, their zone stays exactly the same.
This would benefit them, wouldn't it not?
For the, for the folks here, this could, this, this could be a benefit to them in terms of, you know, they've got a residence now, maybe they want to do a different thing.
It's moot though, Mr. Silves and Mr. Hirschfield. I mean, what I'm saying is, you know, last week, we were talking about changing, really changing something. In this case, for the most part, we're only changing the part that's residential to, to general neighborhood. And last week, I think, was much more intensive of a Vision Plan change than this one. And so I don't think we're going to affect the current businesses where last week I really thought there was some chance that West Texas Steel and some of those businesses were being impacted. These, these businesses that are already in business are going to, their, their color is going to stay exactly the same regardless of our vote today unless we, you know, unless we dug in even deeper.
Are those vacant lots on the north end of that block?
You mean the lots here?
Right.
The orange one didn't come up as vacant when we went through there. The yellow is a, a more high-density residential and the darker green was a more sprawling, low-density residential. But these two lots here did come up as vacant in our survey.
And I, and I hear what Kendall's saying because we, we've got to be careful and that we don't jeopardize any potential businesses maybe wanting to spring up there. So...
We don't want to get ahead of ourselves either because there is an issue with the volume of traffic in those areas, you know. I know that right now, if we were to change it, then we'd have some serious congestion. We already have some congestion issues there and if we were to change it, then that might be a...
Let me, let me ask for kind of a point of order here, Mr. Silves. I have recognized Mr. Alexander to be after Mr. Hirschfield.
I'll let you direct. My points are on the, this plan right here, the thoroughfare plan. They don't, they have very little to do with what Kendall was talking about. So if you want to take my direction, we can. But it looks like there's a comment from a gentleman out. He may have something that's much more relevant.
I'll definitely, I'll definitely get you to public comment and let the gentleman, he's the one that's the, the advocate. So I'll definitely get him up here.
My, my comments are about the thoroughfare. If you look at how Grape Creek connects into Ogden, which looks like it goes down and will connect into Umbel Road, that to me is... connect into Umbel Road, that to me is extremely important because it is not easy to get to the Coliseum. The Coliseum is on the way to only the Coliseum. And if you're going to help San Angelo economically and you're going to help that Coliseum by way of the Coliseum, then you're going to have to get traffic in and out of the Coliseum easier than you do now. And 50th Street is one way. But I've always thought from Bryant to the Coliseum has never been developed. It, it needs to be, and that's your path.
Okay.
And when I looked at the vision plan, it doesn't reflect that. The proposed vision plan, green. There's, this would be a major road. Umbel Road would turn into the way to get to the Coliseum. And there would be businesses that want to locate on it. It would be probably a five lane road, I would guess eventually. That's the way to make it work. And I just don't see it here. And I would, I would, if it was my choice, I would push for that road as fast as possible, get it built and, because that makes the Coliseum very accessible and would solve a major problem. And then the vision plan is off at that point. So as a visionary here, I'm going to say, I would like to see some, that thought out more to see where neighborhood commercial would fall into play here.
Where does the line between two and four, where is the line between two and four?
Districts?
Yeah, yes. This is definitely your district, right? Two. And where does that red dotted line, how far before it starts getting into your world? Do you know?
It, it doesn't hit mine at all. My district is 20th.
Okay, that dotted line as it comes on down doesn't get there?
No.
Okay. Thanks so much. So I just, Mr. Self, I think I'm looking for you to, you know, I lived up there for 11 years myself and I used that road all the time and very familiar with this. But anyway, I'm just looking for you to, to start weighing in and then maybe bring your constituent or your, your business person up.
Which exact road are you talking about?
Well, he, Mr. Alexander brought up that dotted road, which doesn't exist. But he's saying, he thinks that for the vision plan, it might, should be turned into something that's along the lines of general commercial or neighborhood commercial. And I'm saying, I think those are all houses.
They are.
Currently. See what I'm saying? So I'd be careful even in my vision plan about saying, we're going to get rid of all those houses. That's why I was saying...
I think, I think one house is in the way and there's a problem and an engineer would have to work that out. It depends what route we take. But Umbel Road, it's just barely on the map. Umbel Road, to complete it, there's very, there's very little housing around it. It's probably ranch and estate. There's opportunities there.
What I'm going to do is try to get us, let me do two things right here first, okay? One, we're really only talking about the area that's that area, okay? So, so unless you want to remand it back to the, the planning commission and say, I want you to look at the vision for this dotted red line, then we're not talking about that today.
Okay.
So first, I want to do that, okay? We're really only talking about, do we want to make a change to the vision map about this area? So I'm, you know, and again, in my mind, I definitely would want Mr. Self to be on board with remanding it back because it really is his world. And I think those are all houses, so I wouldn't be in a hurry to remand it back. But I, I think I want to try to get us focused just on the area that we're talking about today and not do too much with the dotted line, except keep it in mind. But if we, if we want them to do something with the vision map about the dotted red line road, then we have to send it back to them and tell them to.
Well, I don't like delaying progress and probably our progress right now is where the subject is.
Okay.
Closest to the Coliseum. But it, but I also don't want to forget that that needs to be thought out in the future on the vision.
Okay. So the two pieces of, the way this is playing out is the planning commission saying, I hear the concern about the congestion, but I think you ought to let that be neighborhood commercial, you know? And that's what the planning commission is saying. Staff is saying, and staff is saying, well, you know, because of the congestion on Coliseum Drive and on 43rd Street and what happens with events, we're not so sure you ought to really let that be commercial, neighborhood commercial. And that's really our vote here on, on what to do with the map.
Well, and my comment is if you, if you'll fix up that Umbel Road all the way to the Coliseum, you've solved...
But you would basically be saying, let's, don't deal with this, let's deal with something bigger.
Well, I say, go ahead. I would say, do what we have before as proposed with the planning commission's changes and then work on congestion from here on out.
With the agenda items.
Making it a priority to solve. And that would be the next...
Okay. Mr. Self, unless you want to speak now, what I'm going to do is bring the gentleman up and let him tell you what he wants to do.
I would like to hear from him.
Okay. Sir, why don't you come on up and talk about what you're wanting to do and then, and then let's decide which way we're going to go.
First of all, isn't it great that we are living in a country that we can all meet like this and me and him not go to fist to fist? And I know he's doing the best for San Angelo. But in my thinking, since 1979...
Needs to introduce himself.
This map...
Hi, sir. I know you don't do the, it's like what I was doing earlier today where you don't do this all the time. But for the record, I'd like you to go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
My name is Bill Murray. I'm the owner of the property located on 43rd Street from the fourth lot there, straight down 40th Street. There is no other businesses in that area other than a monument place that is on the corner and the property that I own. And I operate a heavy construction, house building, mobile homes, and anything you want constructed, oil field pads, we've got bulldozers, we've got trucks, we've got everything. Okay. 1979, I turned in a plat, which the planning commission says never was acted on. And if it wasn't acted on, how did I get the special permits for the three lots? No, this is a no brainer. But anyway, I have three special permits up there in the north, going around Grape Creek Road to 43rd Street, four lots out that way, straight back in. And then all this property here, straight down to 43rd, I own. It's landlocked over here. You can't get into my property from Coliseum Drive or any other place other than 43rd, Grape Creek Road and Chadburn. The main exit is on Chadburn. It's been that way since 19...
Jeff, could you bring up on the map the, the current vision plan? Because it kind of shows some of those spots that he's talking about. Just might make it easier to, or, or right there was fine, back there. Or the one before. Keep going. You had one that just showed the, the property.
Oh, yeah.
Right there. That works.
Okay, if you'll look there, there's three lots up at the top and go straight down to 43rd Street, everything in there is my property. There's only one little pie at the corner up there that is residential. One, one little piece of land. And it comes from the corner here down and it cuts off my back gate. That's residential or was. The planning commission approved a five to one vote that all of that belong or should go to commercial. If that's true, that's fine. But I, as far as light commercial y'all are talking about, if I make an application, according to my attorney, I lose the zoning that I already have. He wants me to make an application for zoning, which I already have. And my big problem is this, you have an envision for San Angelo. This envision for San Angelo has never been discussed with the property owners and change in their zoning. Never have I got a letter that says, we're going to change your back gate from commercial to residential. When I went to the planning commission for four times, they have never, never been able to answer my questions. Who enacted this envision program? Whose idea was it and when was it enacted? I found out it was 2003. I've had my zoning since 1979. I don't want to give it up. I pay y'all plenty of taxes. I can't operate a business up there if you shut off my back gate. Everyone on Coliseum Drive, everyone around 43rd, I've got their full permission to keep my res, uh, commercial property, commercial other than residential. And it's heavy commercial. It's not something to take lightly. And if I make an application, I lose the zoning that I have now. I don't want to do that. But I want the commission and the city commission to know, how do you have the right to take away something that already has been zoned without notification?
I want to know. And I agree with him. I want to know how that works.
It doesn't.
It doesn't work. So I want to know from planning.
Not, but, but here again, I was told in the court of law, well, a deposition, when I made a big mistake and hit the underground cable along the Verizon or General Tel at the time, you people own another 17 foot from Chadburn over to my property line that you could have easily made a turning lane into the Coliseum, but you didn't do it. I had an engineer at that hearing tell me water runs to the east. And so we're going to dig a big old hole out here to collect that water. It's dry, never has had any water in it. I've lived up there for 40 years. The water runs west, folks, down to the creek, down to the old saddle club, right into the river. Always has, always will. Topographical area by aircraft fatigue. That's a mistake. And you paid thousands upon thousands of dollars to dig a hole next to Lakeview Stadium. The dirt's still up there. You hadn't even moved it. I'm upset. Yeah, I'm upset. And I apologize. I live in one of the greatest cities in Texas and the greatest state. I'm a veteran, damn proud of it. And I will fight for my rights. And that's what I'm doing now. You don't have a right to take that land away from me or rezone it, not until you get me a letter and go to court of law. I won't let you.
Okay. And walk me, yes, sir. Walk me through your back gate and where you access it from.
Uh, there's an automobile that ran through the back gate and it was shut off. And it's, uh, I don't have a mouse. My back gate is right here. Follow this line and I'll show you the residential. Oh. Pardon me. Okay. Right from here, straight down to the corner of this first lot, you're taking out part of that and then going down like this to the corner of this right here.
Your trucks that come in and out and those kinds of things, where do you need them to come in and out? That's my...
I don't need anything. I just need to be left alone, let's do what I want to. The gate's shut.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was asking.
Gate is shut. Till it's legal, I won't open it. I've never had a commissioner yet that wanted to come up there and look, other than one. And Morrison, he came up there, he has no problems with it. A couple of others came up there, they have no problem with it. Planning commission has no problem with it. I'm landlocked. There's no other traffic. There's no traffic. I don't want a permit to build anything else. Y'all are worried about an RV park, I was understood, that I, they were scared that I might build an RV park. Y'all own one right across the street from me. You operate one at the Coliseum. You don't have any problems with it.
Thanks. Okay. Okay. Further question for, or further comments or those kinds of things up here? What we have in front of us is, is the consideration of approving an amendment to the vision plan. What it would do is make neighborhood commercial for the rest of that block. That's what the planning commission has put in front of you, okay? So doing that would put you in line with what he is asking for. Beyond that, are there questions on that?
Is that true? Is that, is it in line with what you're asking for?
Heavy commercial.
See, and we're not, we're, we're doing purple is what? Light commercial, right?
Yeah, neighborhood, neighborhood commercial.
I couldn't hear, second?
Yes, sir. I think it was neighborhood commercial.
Okay. So, and here's my...
Oh, of course. Yeah, you can give her that and you can send it all the way around.
I'll do that. You just answer this, Phil.
Thanks so much.
I need a clarification from Jeff or AJ. They're asking for an application to change zoning. Am I correct? You're, you're asking to change some zoning?
I'm asking it to stay the same as it was in 1979 when I passed.
And it will stay the same, correct, AJ? It stays the same?
Let me give you a summary. Try to add some clarity to this.
What I don't want to happen is if he's asked to change other zoning on another part, that he has to change on the original part too. That, that can't happen.
The original statement that was made and the planning commission asked the staff to look into was the history of the zoning on this property. We spent about 20 hours pulling every zone change, every ordinance, every minute record. And we could find no evidence that that tract was ever zoned anything other than residential. We understood that Mr. Murray's intent was to have some type of commercial enterprise on this lot. And so we explained to him, I also spoke with Mr. Councilman Adams at the time, as well as Councilman Morrison, that the legal process in place to get to that final goal would be to look at the vision plan, which wouldn't currently in its current state, support a change to commercial. After taking care of that issue, a zone change application can be filed for commercial and would potentially be supported by this plan. So we're trying to use the legal procedures in our toolbox to get to that end goal. I don't know that we can ever come to a conclusion that will satisfy everyone on the history, but I can tell you that we've done some extensive research on that.
But, but the question, he, he made the statement that if he applies for a permit in that area, that he will, he might lose what he's got. Is that correct?
It's currently zoned residential.
Oh, okay.
So you would lose residential zoning.
Let's just, let's make sure that we're, we're crystal clear on this thing. If you go back and you look at, there's one that shows the, kind of that little triangle. And I believe it's a little triangle that we're talking about where your gate is. Okay. Right? That would work, yes.
This is the current zoning.
And so, so if we...
And so the yellow denotes that it's currently zoned residential.
If we change that section that's yellow, that, that little triangle up there in the top corner, okay? And so then that gets his gate in a quote, neighborhood commercial type operation.
And we're trying to set you up to be able to do that legally. And so that's why we're doing the vision plan amendment.
So then it's not going to hurt his current CGCH that he's got when he applies for that triangle where his gate is, correct?
Ultimately, that's a decision for you all in the planning commission, but I would suspect not.
Okay. But it wouldn't change what he, all, all we'd be adding is that little section.
You're correct. You'd be adding to it.
Rezoning that little small swath.
Correct.
You won't get the whole lot. You'll get that portion only. Because I, because I remember another, we, we try to get the whole lot.
We try to get the whole lot. And that's why I'm not going to speak for you or the planning commission, but they have the ability to tell us, let's just do the portion that's zoned residentially. And they seem open to that as based on previous conversations.
But when he makes the application, it's for the entire lot.
The planning commission has the option to rezone only a portion of the lot if they so choose. We will always make them aware that it can create problems, but they ultimately hold the decision-making authority.
I think this can get us where we need to be.
We're, we're giving you the path to get there. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
So what happens if he walks into the planning commission and the planning commission doesn't agree with that and they get the whole thing? They go with the whole lots, he doesn't want the whole lot.
We, we as a council get an opportunity to overturn that.
He appeals it to us.
You have to put your faith in the elected official, we're, we're, we are citizens just like you, we're not, we, we intermediate with the city and, and set policy, you have to put your faith in us, that we will go for that.
Well, it's not, it's not only faith in us, the fact is, the planning commission's already voted five to one to move forward with what would, would put him in the place he wants to be. So I think the planning commission's already inclined to support the gentleman, and, and so I think, again, what you're hearing, I think what you're hearing is, look, if you make this move, then the next move, uh, looks like the dominos are going to fall to put the gentleman where he, where he wants to be.
I think it's faith. I think it's faith, it's not a sure deal, and, and anytime, there's not a sure deal in planning, people get upset, they get worried, it really puts them on edge. We've seen entire neighborhoods like Butler Farms, we've seen Valley, uh, Valley View and Knickerbocker, those residents in there, every time you do it, we do this to them, it, it makes them worried. And he, he has to put his faith in us, and I'm not sure why we can't right now say we want to, just that triangle's the only part we'll allow for the application to apply to. How come we can't say that right now? To protect him.
You can't act on an application until it's been filed, but understand that this group makes the final decision. So if that's your intent, you vote that way.
I, so we know it's probably going to happen, how can we, how come we cannot insure him? That, that's my question.
We don't know when it's going to come, you may not be here.
His application's for the entire lot, and that's his worry. And I'm taking, I'm taking care of my customer, so to speak, right here. My, the citizen is depending on us, who are elected, and he's unsure about the process because he's putting the application in for his entire lot, which hurts his business if it ever switched. And I realize that we won't vote that way, but, but why not just make it clear right now? If we can.
Because you can't.
That's my, okay.
Because he has the unit applied.
And it's outside what the caption is written to address.
So we can't make a, a special provision to, for his, um, application to not include the entire lot?
No, sir.
I mean, I get, you have a clear agenda and a posted agenda and an open meetings act and on and on and on, and it says, consideration of approving an amendment to the vision plan component. Then you have assurance that that's putting you on the path to get where you want to go, and then you've all been educated so that you can vote.
Procedure.
That way, as the procedures walk their way through.
That's right.
Um, I mean, I don't think there's anything else you can do.
One last comment. Mr. Hirschfeld.
Just, AJ, okay, if you look at the current vision.
Yes, sir.
E- even without this, I mean, what we're, what we're talking about today really does not even affect whether he, he has or, or could apply for the zone change of that little triangle, correct?
He could apply for it today, but if he applied for a commercial zone change and it does not match up with our vision plan, we can't recommend approval of it.
But, but-
With this change to the vision map that we're looking at now, we could conceivably recommend approval of it because it would be consistent with the plan. We're, we're trying to set you up for success.
All right. E- even though it's not going to be, he's, he's going to ask for heavy commercial and this is neighborhood commercial.
Well, and that's news to me. Um, the minute record from the planning commission talks about doing things like, you know, selling sodas and snacks and having a snack bar kind of business, so it sounds like we need confirmation on what the actual business is to be desired as well.
Well, I, myself, I, I don't want to impede progress, um, and they ask you all the time why you want to be a council person, so I guess I get to answer that today. Getting my packet late last night, if it wouldn't hinder the process, I would like to just move this to next week so I have a chance to look at it. If that's going to hinder process, uh, progress, then, uh, we can, uh, you know, council, we can definitely take action, but.
I think, Mr. Self, the key thing that you just heard is that, I mean, what was, what I just heard was even if you make the change, you may not be setting this up for the next step because the advocate is asking for something different than this, than the process is, is moving us forward. I think what you might want to do is table the item to allow you to talk with your constituent, clearly understand what he wants, and then kind of help make sure, and so I think that's probably all, all fine. Uh, the, the only person that's being affected, obviously, is your constituent because we're, we're slowing it down, but we're going to slow it down, folks, if, uh, if we even approve this, and then it comes back and he wants heavy commercial, and this, this vision plan change doesn't allow that, so you may as well slow it down and get it right the first time and make sure we can get it right. Uh, so it looks like to me, your idea of tabling, it's a pretty good idea, okay?
Sure, that's what I'd like to do, and, and I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to table number nineteen, so there can be some further discussion and, and, uh, and really an update for the new council member, okay? All right. Any further question or comment on that?
I have just one quick one. AJ, in the previous talks with planning, heavy commercial was never mentioned?
I was not at the planning commission meeting, so that's one of the reasons I didn't present this to you, I'm not as familiar with it as Mr. Hens is.
Jeff, do you remember, were you there? No? Okay.
Uh, the minute, the minute record from this particular discussion at planning commission is in the background packet, word for word. The only mention we've got there is barbecue stand and potentially a, um, you know, selling drinks to college students type of thing. Um, the heavy commercial is, is news to us, there's some more intense activities along Chadbourne Street that are zoned appropriately now, but in terms of on this property, doing heavy commercial wasn't, wasn't part of that.
Okay, I just wanted to get that clear, all right.
Okay, let's, uh, we have a motion and a second to table and allow further education and, and involvement, so let's do that. Let me call for that vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move to item number twenty, what time is it?
Eleven thirty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, after I tabled it, I was thinking that public comment might not be necessary, but I'm not, I don't mind having it, so.
Yes, my name is Jim Turner, and I think that, uh, Councilman Self's initial plan to table this is a good one, but I think one of the things we also need to do is get the planning commission to broaden their look at this entire area, especially on how it includes transportation. Transportation and Fifty-eighth Street and connecting the Coliseum to Bryant was part of the original justification or original plan after Spur Arena was built, perhaps that sales tax money that has not been followed through anything between Chadburn and Bryant. That's still on the table, they've looked at right-ofways and everything else, that needs to be updated and brought back and get going again, especially with the amount of traffic we have now. I don't think Humboldt Road was the route they wanted to take, it was probably, it's probably still not a good route, but the planning commission needs to look at also the transportation of this area, and let's get the vision plan to match what is actually capable of being there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further public comment on that item? All right. I'm going to move us then to item number twenty. This is consideration of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract in a, in substantially attached form between Catalyst Urban Development and the City of San Angelo to carry out services regarding a master developer as outlined, and we have an interim, our presentation by our interim director of development services, AJ Fauver.
Thank you. Uh, your background report has a couple of different items, one is the letter of intent that was submitted to us by the consultant, um, you're all somewhat familiar with that, either from speaking about it yesterday or about at a previous meeting. You also have a short staff report that just outlines the process that we've been through to kind of jog your memory, and so I'll go through that briefly. We've been having this discussion since the beginning of, of two thousand and eleven, when the master developer concept was first sort of discussed among this group and some other groups around the city. You may remember that, uh, from January to April, we had a request for qualifications that was out, uh, that was put together in January, published in April. Uh, we sent that out to a variety of firms with experience in the master developer type of concept, as well as published that online in a variety of areas. And we did have, uh, one submission that was sent to us on behalf of Catalyst Urban Development. In August, the DDC, the Downtown Development Commission, actually spoke with staff and with Catalyst Development about the phase, the scope of services, um, the pricing, variety of issues, and officially made a recommendation to forward to you all to consider awarding the contract to this particular consulting firm. We worked through the process of September and October, trying to refine that scope of services, get to provide you with something very detailed that you could look through and understand all parts of the process, and then we, of course, had the joint session between the council at that time and the Downtown Development Commission in December. Uh, the action at that time specifically was that the council did, uh, number one, accept the recommendation from the Downtown Development Commission to award the contract to this individual firm. They also approved the scope of service, uh, as presented in the letter of intent. And then there were two additional, uh, specific asks that the council wanted staff to look into. One was to configure the contract in a way that this was done on a phase-by-phase process rather than as one entire contract. Uh, the intent there would be that the, uh, individuals that we contracted with would perform phase one first, come and present those deliverables to you all, and then you as a group would determine whether or not you entered into contract on the next phase, and so on and so forth. And so we have made some substantial changes to the contract to, uh, make this contract encompass only phase one and to go no further without your permission. The other item that, uh, the council asked staff to look into was to look at a funding source, uh, for the amount. The amount for phase one, as you may recall, was sixty-eight thousand. Uh, there was an additional, uh, twelve to twenty-two thousand dollars in expenses that would cover subcontracting and a variety of items, um, which Mr. Rutherford is here and can maybe shed some light on as well. So that would be a total, um, maximum cap of ninety thousand dollars. And so we've worked with the budgeting staff to identify, uh, funding for that, and Mr. Dane would probably be better to talk about that than I would. Uh, so we have taken care of both of those items that you asked us to look into. So we're to the last step today. Uh, what we're asking you to do today specifically is to take action that would allow the city manager to execute the contract, understanding that it's simply for phase one. Uh, the phase one services, as outlined in the letter of intent, encompass a variety of tasks, a lot of it is data analysis, um, analysis of the land, the property, uh, specifically the ownership of those properties, uh, public lands, areas where the tax base may be declining, to look at some market-based programming, uh, to also do some prioritization of projects and locations that would be, um, best spent with our energy up front. And then also to put together some items that we could use to carry out this intention. That would include an implementation timetable, um, packaging some of the programming, and explaining how public-private partnerships could perhaps fund some of those projects. And, uh, that would identify specifically three projects for priority. And then lastly, to identify potential investors and developers for those three projects. So that is a, a very short summary, uh, overview, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. We do, again, also have Mr. Parrish Rutherford here with Catalyst Urban Development that can also answer questions regarding the services if you have questions.
Do I have questions on this item?
I do.
Mr. Silvas.
AJ, I know that phase one, you're looking at, you know, the sixty-eight thousand lump sum, and then the twelve to twenty-two thousand, ninety thousand, but then in phase two, uh, an additional ten thousand? I mean, it's more than ninety thousand, I mean, let's be clear.
The ninety thousand covers phase one, and that's all that we're talking about contracting today.
Just phase one.
We have, uh, an idea, they have provided us, you're correct, um, ten thousand dollars per month for six months on phase two, um, but staff would not be authorized to even begin that step until the, the council has heard, discussed it again, and given us permission to execute the contract. So you're correct that that is to be, um, considered, but all we're asking you for in terms of immediate expenditures is that initial amount.
In the bottom line, what, what would be their goal, his goal, to do what?
Well, what, how about if we let him tell you that?
I think that's a good idea.
I mean, I, I think the taxpayers want to know is the reason I'm asking.
Council, Parrish Rutherford, Principal Catalyst Urban Development, nice to see you again. Uh, the goal here is to define specific project opportunities for investment in downtown in a way that captures the energy that you're having that we heard about earlier, uh, in some of the presentations earlier today, in a way that furthers, um, the strengthening of the regional identity of downtown, so that you've got daytime activity, nighttime activity, you've got strategic locations for projects that strengthens downtown itself. That's very different than a pure market-led process where the market kind of comes in, looks at the easiest thing to do, and then picks that off. That's, that is not necessarily a strategic process, we would be taking you through, uh, a more of a strategic process.
So how do you strengthen that? What?
Well, one of the things we like to do is you'll look at existing anchors in downtown, whether it be employment anchors, retail anchors, where key restaurants are, where centers of activity are, um, and we look at ways to better, better connect them. One thing that's clearly missing in downtown, in my opinion, is the nighttime population, there's residential potential that could occur, you see that all over the region, certainly projects that we've been involved in have done that. So you've got pockets of downtown that are operating pretty well, retail on Concho Street, obviously what's around Shannon, um, but then you've got zones in between that aren't necessarily. So by having strategic infill, whether it's coming into existing buildings or new construction that links some of these districts together, it strengthens the regional profile of, of the place of downtown. Urban development and redevelopment is different than what is happening, say, down on the Loop, where it's just purely a land play, and then there's retail or something that comes in. This is about creating a place, and really focusing in and orchestrating, um, placemaking, to use a word. Um, and the only way to do that is to analyze, um, the difficulty of investment on particular blocks where you need to make those linkages, so you can look at, um, the amount of, or the, the, the number of owners on a particular block, how difficult it would be to assemble that. Have discussions with the owners on some of these key blocks and what their potential plans are for their real estate. Um, looking at the, the anchors like Shannon and what their plans are, and how best to leverage those plans in a way that, um, again, isn't just delivering new space in downtown, but delivering it in a way that, that strengthens the, the, the programming of downtown and the kind of visual experience of downtown. Uh, one of the, in, in listening to your presentations earlier, it seems to me that you've got a great opportunity right now with everything that's happening in the region, um, and there's a lot of interest in activity that's occurring. The question is whether that's harnessed in a way that leaves downtown and the whole city of San Angelo in a better place at the end of the day versus a scattering of pad sites. So, uh, the, the one, the, a strong jewel that you have is downtown, it does distinguish you from other environments around, we're urbanists, we believe in that. And trying to find a way to allow that investment to come in in a very strategic manner that, that reinforces a sense of a medical district, or the arts and history, uh, area, um, or the, the Concho retailers and, and restaurant opportunities that might plug in, uh, between there and the other employment areas of downtown. I mean, the, there's only one entity that has all of downtown in mind, and that's you. There aren't, there isn't one master, uh, landowner, um, that is looking and thinking strategically about how to phase investment. So, you know, when you get into something like downtown reinvestment and, and the strategy that, that is therein, um, really only the city is able to go through that process with folks like us. I mean, we're developers, we're investors, that's what we're doing, um, all around Texas right now. When we saw your RFP for master development, the first question I had was, what's your plan? You have a plan with a capital P, but it doesn't have much teeth in it as relates to implementation, phasing, um, the, the issues specifically related to particular blocks and how those projects would go forward, what the programming of the projects would be, you have to have that in order to execute kind of that capital P planning vision that you all have prepared thus far. I mean, that's, that's what we're interested in working with you on, and whether we're involved in the vertical investment, our partners, um, or other groups to do things that we don't knew, that's, the only way we can determine that is to go through this initial underwriting period, that's, that's what this is about.
And let me ask, let me ask, and I assume, or, you can, can you share some success stories out there that you've worked with, cities?
Sure. Um, we have worked, uh, we have worked on many urban redevelopment districts around the state, um, areas of Dallas, Houston, if you know, if you've been in Dallas, the, the Uptown District of Dallas, that's something we worked on, that's delivered about five billion dollars to the tax base of Dallas. Uh, what's called the Midtown District in, in Houston, if you've been, you were in Houston recently, the area between downtown and the medical center, that's called Midtown, that's a strategy that we put together, um, and, you know, much activity has happened there since. Um, even in smaller communities, uh, like downtown Denton, uh, which also has a university, um, has experienced a lot of new growth, um, that's similar in a way to San Angelo, uh, a place called Garland, um, similar, they have, uh, it was a transit area, and we worked on a reinvestment strategy for that. In Texas, we, the Loft District of Austin, west of downtown, uh, as you make your way down Fifth Street towards Lamar, uh, there's now a, a fully functioning residential mixed-use district that is kind of all the rage, uh, we worked on that. So we have a lot of experience in urban redevelopment, and I think my personal connections to your community, um, have continued to have us focused in on the potential. Uh, we believe a lot in San Angelo and what you all are doing as a regional center, and we firmly believe that downtown strengthens the full city, a stronger downtown is going to strengthen the full city, help position Goodfellow moving forward. Um, you know, if you're going to capture the growth in ASU, they're looking for certain things, it all comes down, I think, to proper development in downtown.
And let me just say, my last comment or question is, I'm not very familiar, I think I've been through the years ago Garland and Denton, but are they comparable to us, you know, a hundred thousand, ninety thousand population?
Yeah, one of the interesting things about your size is, and I think you heard it earlier when you were talking about the challenges with, uh, with pulling data, and we have pulled some data, and there are challenges out there in what you have, there's big disconnects in terms of what is reported through your MPO or, or others. So the size of your community is unique, um, in the state, actually, I think, um, in terms of it historically not having a lot of, of traditional real estate impact and, and, and kind of investment. So many of the areas that we've worked in have been in larger MSAs, you know, so some of the communities I mentioned are attached to larger MSAs, but the concept of urban investment, redevelopment, it, that's the same. But the concept of urban investment, redevelopment, that's the same regardless of what market you're in, because it's very targeted and customized on a block-by-block basis around an overall plan.
Mr. Herschel.
I like everything you're saying, but it's really a synopsis of the joint session that we had, January?
Yes.
I believe it was.
December, yeah.
December, okay. And so where you gave the full presentation, and just as a note, that may, we may want to put a link or something to make sure that people see exactly what was, because that was a full-fledged presentation with all your experience and all these other locations, and that could be informative. Really, my question is, where's the money going to come from?
We have vacant positions at this point, and we've taken those salary savings and captured them enough of, we've captured enough of those to pay for this project.
Okay. I'm excited about this. This is the culmination of three years, about three years of progress of us trying to get to this point. And so with that said, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve this as presented. Do I have further questions on the presentation?
I too like what you say. I mean, I represent downtown, I'm all for it, but Phase One, we're just approving Phase One?
Yes, sir.
What is a timeline? I mean, how long, what?
The actual work effort itself is probably in the six to eight week range. One thing we'll need to interact with on staff is the degree of public interaction that we need to go through, but the actual work effort itself is about six to eight weeks.
Okay.
Pretty quick.
Okay, other questions? Public input? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, I have one no. So, Mr. Vardman?
Okay, I have, let me, looking at the time, let me check in and make sure what, on the agenda. We do have, we do have. Y'all, this is as good a time as any to go ahead and break and go into executive session. We do have some items for the agenda for the executive session. And so I would maybe push through if we didn't, but we do, so we may as well break and go into executive session. Okay? Remember that item number 21 was tabled for a future agenda, so when we come back, we would be on item number 22, and we'd have 22, 23, 24 to go, and then the follow-up in administrative issues. At this time, what I'm going to do is take us into executive session, and... I'm struggling, where is it? There we go. All right. Move us into executive session under the provision of the Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to the Requirement That Meetings Be Open, Section 551.072, to Deliberate the Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property, and 551.087, to Discuss any, an offer of financial or other incentive to a company or companies with whom the City of San Angelo is conducting economic development negotiations. Okay, we are right now at 11:52, entering executive session. Okay, good afternoon. Let me call the meeting back to order. We're entering back into regular session at 12:43 PM, and we'll start with item number 22. This is consideration of adopting the 2013 Twin Buttes Reservoir Recreation Use Plan and any action related thereto. We have a presentation by Parks and Recreation Director Carl White.
About a year and a half ago, City Council authorized that we develop this plan. As you know, the Bureau of Reclamation owns the Twin Buttes Reservoir as well as about 8,000 acres around it. We threw agreement with them. The city manages the property, and because of the number of acreage, there's a lot of room for recreation, hunting, boating, windsurfing. The Bureau of Reclamation recommended that we develop this plan, and with their help, helped fund it, so the city, the cost to the city was only $9,000. We worked with Texas Outdoors Consulting for the development of the plan. It's now in its final draft stage, and we're simply asking council to adopt this plan. We would use it as a guideline moving forward, and any specific recommendation that's going to be brought up in this plan would have to come back to council for consideration. So with that, I'm going to introduce Lauren Schrum, who'll give you the presentation.
Thank you, Carl. Good afternoon. Excuse me, I'm a little bit under the weather, so I hope I don't choke up here. I'm going to talk a little bit about what's involved in the Twin Buttes Reservoir Recreation Use Plan.
Can you adjust the mic a little better, please?
How about that?
I don't lean forward, you have to pull it too, towards you, I don't want you to get uncomfortable.
Okay. So, part of this planning process, we involved quite a bit of public input, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that here in the next couple of slides. But first, I want to talk about Twin Buttes Reservoir itself. It was constructed in 1963 by the building of the Twin Buttes Dam, and there are 12,858 acres total of land. 9,800 acres are in the conservation pool, and the area is managed by the City of San Angelo via a contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. Like Carl said, it is owned by the Bureau. The priorities of the Bureau of Reclamation are flood control, irrigation, municipal drinking water supplies, and recreation. And it's important to note that the priorities of this federal agency are water-related, and recreation is a lower priority for this, for this federal agency as compared to others. So what we did is we did an assessment of the natural, cultural resources out there as part of this plan. We looked at the water bodies, of course, which is the main part of the area, and then we looked at all the different vegetation, the wildlife resources, and the cultural resources. There's quite a bit of extensive archaeological sites there at Twin Buttes, and this picture here shows a couple of them that are very easily seen by the public, some mortar holes where they used to grind seeds and nuts and things like that, some of the prehistoric peoples. And so that's very open to the public. There are some areas where there are not so much, but there are over 200 archaeological sites there at Twin Buttes that the Bureau of Reclamation wants to protect. And then we looked at the current recreation use. Whether it's legitimized or not by the Bureau, this is what's happening out there at Twin Buttes today, and that includes ATV riding, trail running, mountain biking, hunting, fishing, windsurfing, kayaking, geocaching, camping, and horseback riding. So all this is going on out there on those, on that acreage. Challenges, there's quite a few challenges there. Some of you are pretty familiar with the history, I'm sure, of Twin Buttes Reservoir. If you're not, there's quite a bit of litter and illegal dumping that happens out there. And there's a picture here of quite a bit of shotgun shells, carpet, plastic swimming pools, couches, big screen TVs. If you take a drive out there, you will see any number of things. There's also some illicit activities happening that's been reported by our law enforcement out there and other citizens, evidence of some potentially drug activity, things like that. There's little vehicular management, and basically that means that people can drive anywhere they can get their vehicle to. And that causes all kinds of issues in terms of erosion, blazing new trails. Low water levels is a huge challenge, obviously given the conditions we have had lately with the drought. The water is shrinking, and that's a picture here of one of the ramps. Currently, none of the ramps reaches the water. So, that is an issue. Stakeholder group conflict is another issue or challenge that Twin Buttes faces. Currently, the groups have certain areas where they participate in activities, and they've sort of adopted areas and built trails. However, there's no official rules or regulations sort of monitoring those, and they overlap in areas where it could create conflict in terms of even fatalities, things like off-road vehicles driving on the same trails where people are trying to run and things like that. And that ties into the public safety, which is the challenge. And then there's also hunting, so you bring in the mix of firearms here, so we've got some issues that we want to try and manage, and that's what this plan is addressing. So part of the process of the plan is we looked at successful park models already out there, and we looked at the Texas State Park model. It's one of the best state park models out there in the nation, and we looked to see what they did in terms of management. And then we looked at off-road vehicle best management practices. There's several examples of parks across the nation that are doing motorized trails successfully, so we analyzed those. And then we looked at hunting best management practices across different agencies to see what they were doing. And then we looked at innovative partnerships that are out there to help manage these type of recreation areas and provide funding for improvements. So the Texas State Park model, some of the main criteria is vehicle control. That is number one. They have established road systems throughout any of their parks, where vehicles can and can't go, and they are normally constricted by wooden bollards or post and chain type things to manage where vehicles can go, to protect the resources and public safety. They also have designated use zones whereby they designate areas for sort of primitive zones where certain activities like on-foot traffic can occur, and then high-use zones, high-impact zones where things like events can take place. They also have controlled access, which means there's a gate at the entrance and exits to any of the parks, and either it's manned temporarily or in high seasons by volunteers or paid staff, or it's locked at night and someone comes and unlocks it in the morning. They also have a park host program, which is also not just unique to the state park model, it's a national trend that's going on right now with reduced budgets in all park agencies, and that includes having volunteer labor come in and becoming park hosts, where they live onsite at a park in exchange for an RV site with electricity, sometimes cable or things like that, and water, in exchange for their labor to help patrol, man gates, clean restrooms, pick up trash, run interpretive programs. Their volunteer labor is exchanged for that spot, and they help, you know, do things because they're eyes on the ground. Public hunting program is another criteria that's part of the state park model. It's very popular. The state manages the wildlife populations, they come in and survey, and they manage the sites and permit, create a permitting process where people can come in and get a permit to come in and hunt. Also, they have a litter management program at the state park model, and they have consistently throughout the state parks, they have established dumpsters where people can go and dump their trash, and through the volunteer programs, they also have litter cleanups. Interpretation and recreation is another component of this model that's important because if you're not interpreting for the public and providing recreational opportunities for the public, you're not, you don't have a support group to help fund the parks and to help protect them for the future. Then unified management signage, rules, and fees is another important criteria of the state park model. Every state park you go to, they will have unified signage, unified rules, unified fees, so the public knows what to expect when they come into that particular park. They know what behavior is acceptable, they know what kind of fees they'll be charged, they know what the rules are, and they know that there's always some management onsite watching over things that are going on in that park. And this picture is just an example of one of the unified maps that they have at all of the parks. So then we looked at some of the off-road best management practices, because off-roading at Twin Buttes is really popular currently, and it has a very strong stakeholder group associated with it. So we looked at Quartz Mountain Nature Park in Oklahoma, which is also on Bureau of Reclamation land, so that was an important comparison. We looked at Barnwell Mountain Recreation Area, that's in east Texas. It's a very popular park area that has received quite a bit of funding through the motorized trails program through Texas Parks and Wildlife. We looked at Black Mountain Off-Road Adventure Area in Kentucky, and we looked at Lake Meredith National Recreation Area in Texas, that's just up near Amarillo. All of these places have off-roading and successful trails, and that's a map there of the Black Mountain Trails. So in your plan that you have in your packet, we have charts, these compared all the best management practices at all the different agencies. It looked at, you know, the permits and fees that they charge, where that funding's coming from, if it's coming from, say, an off-highway vehicle decal that everybody has to buy, or whether it's fees to enter the park. We looked at rules, we looked at access hours, whether public consumption of alcohol was allowed, whether they had marked trails, all these kind of things, and we compared Twin Buttes to those other areas. And we, as you can see, there's quite a bit of things that we're lacking in here at Twin Buttes. There's just not a lot there, there's currently not a permitting structure. The stakeholder group has been self-policing themselves fairly well, but there's a lot of other activity out there that's going on that is outside of the core group and it's not controlled. Hunting is another big activity that goes on at Twin Buttes, and there's another large stakeholder group associated with it, so we wanted to take a look specifically at that activity, and we looked at Colorado River Municipal Water District, which is in charge of OH Ivy and the hunting areas around there. We looked at Lake Meredith National Recreation Area. We looked at Laguna Atascosa National Wildlife Refuge, National Forest and Grasslands in Texas, San Angelo State Park, and then Twin Buttes. So we've got a variety of agencies here, all the way from the regional level to the National Park Service, the National Wildlife Service, and National Forest, and the state park system. So we could see what other agencies were doing, and again, some best management practices, charts comparing in terms of permits and fees, hunting seasons, bag limits, what types of ammunition is allowed, what types of firearms are allowed, all these things. Currently, there are two, I want to say two rules right now at Twin Buttes in terms of hunting, and by, they're not widely known, it's not, there's only a few places you can find that information on the city's website, and there's just a lot of misinformation out there in the hunting community as to what is and what isn't allowed. Basically, all state laws still apply, and game wardens patrol the area as well as local law enforcement, but there's really not a managed hunting program, and I, and we recommend later on in this plan that, that we move towards that direction. We also looked at some innovative partnerships. There are some things going on at certain places around the state, like at Lake Bryan, outside Bryan College Station, Texas, where some of the organized groups are really active in managing the site with, with the local authority. And the, the mountain biking community has created an entire trail system there, and it's hugely popular. They host major events there that bring in thousands of people, and they also have triathlons there. So it's something that we can replicate here. Some of the stakeholder groups are already doing that, and it can only be expanded for the future. And then there's some funding partnerships there that are going on. They've actually contracted out to a managing entity. There's a private restaurant that has been created there on the lakefront, and they are managing the campgrounds for them, and they're hosting other special events like concerts that also bring in revenue for the park on a percentage basis, basis with the managing partner. So we talk about that in the plan and how that may apply for Twin Buttes as well. So then we had a lot of public participation, you know, I talked about a lot of stakeholder groups, I've heard from all of them, and we had a workshop where we brought them all in, and we facilitated that workshop with a modified nominal group technique. Basically, it's a process where we start out in small groups and ideas are discussed, and then those small groups present their ideas to the larger group, and the larger group votes on the ideas and priorities that they think are the most important, and that helps promote inclusion of ideas and gets to a better product in terms of planning versus the few and the loud who always tend to speak up the most. It's a great process and ends up being a collective process. Everyone comes out with a vision, feeling like they got their input in. And we also used some of the data from the earlier Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan where we did some surveying online. Some of that data applied to Twin Buttes as well because it talked about fees and other things at Twin Buttes and improvements that wanted to be, that they wanted to be made. And then we held another public meeting, it was just general public meeting, open session. Anybody could come in and say what they wanted, and we got a lot of comments from that as well. So the workshop results were tabulating the plan, and there's a lot there. I'll just highlight the main ones. Trash management and cleanliness was one of the top themes of that workshop. Basically, citizens and stakeholders felt that we need to do a better job of cleaning that place up and maintaining it and getting rid of the illegal dumping issue. Adding restrooms was the second highest thing, whether that be flushing, vault, compost, something, depending on the area of the park, some kind of restrooms is what they wanted added. And then maintaining access to the water for all user groups was the third highest criteria and priority, and that is a challenge because of the fact that the water is still receding. And then maintaining areas for multi-use and instilling a multi-user trail ethic among constituents, that was another top priority. So maintaining areas for people to continue to do the activities they've always done, but also providing for public safety. So we came up with some planning guidelines, and basically we broke it down into the need for recreation use zones. We don't, these are not too detailed. Basically, they're just talking about, like I said, high-impact zones where certain areas are going to take place, where there's a high impact on the resource. Obviously, these are going to be not areas where the sensitive archaeological sites are. The Bureau would not like that. So those are the primitive zones, certain areas where there's things they want to protect, where there's special resource you want to protect. Then we have hunting zones. Then we have hunting zones where hunting activity can take place, and we have off-road vehicle use zones where off-road vehicle use can take place and not conflict with someone hunting, or someone biking, or walking, or birding, all those things. This is a map of the current hunting areas. And conceptual maps later on in the plan detail what hunting areas should remain. Most of them should remain intact. A few of them have been changed. So management recommendations after all the public input and analysis, we came up with a few recommendations. Basically, we recommend that staff work to develop a friends group for this area. There's already a huge stakeholder community, whether it be windsurfers, or off-road users, or mountain bikers, or kayakers, or hunters. They're out there. Staff should help to work to bring all those groups together into one friends group and work towards 501(c)(3) status that allows, not only for that group to adopt the park and help maintain it and operate it, but to receive funds that the city cannot acquire through other grant sources. So it's a win-win situation in terms of adopting the park and bringing in funding. We also recommend that they adopt a park host program, like I mentioned earlier, where some volunteers come in to help manage the site. We also recommend onsite management at some point. The, the fact of the matter is, is that the success of all recreation areas across the board in all agencies, there's some sort of onsite management there. This is such a large parcel of land for local law enforcement to monitor. They just can't be everywhere at once, and if someone is there onsite 24/7, it helps deter a lot of the illicit and illegal activity that we want to avoid. Establishment and enforcement of rules is another recommendation. Obviously, that coincides with onsite management, but it also means more law enforcement patrolling and/or also annexation of the entire Twin Buttes area. Currently, there's some issues legally with enforcing all of the rules and codes and ordinances because of the fact that the entire area is not in the ETGA. So I know that is something that we need to be forward with at some point. And then entrance fees. We do recommend charging entrance fees. The level is, is not determined at this point. It's going to depend on the analysis of the other recreation areas and what amenities are there. At this point, there's not very many amenities, so there wouldn't be a huge entrance fee. But at some point, as you make investment, you have to recoup with some sort of entrance fee. And also, entrance fees will help deter the unwanted behavior. No one will really pay, hopefully, $3 to come in and dump a load of trash when there's someone at the gate collecting fees, so. Other recommendations include signage. Currently, there is little to none out there. No signage in terms of rules, no signage in terms of which way to go. If you know Twin Buttes, then you know your way around, but if you're new, if you're a visitor, you have no way of knowing where you're going. An interpretive signage as well would be helpful. Vehicular management, that's another recommendation. I talked about that. The Bureau wants an established road system there. That's one of their requirements. Essentially, unfettered vehicle access is not condoned and not, not in line with regulation, with federal regulation. Litter management, again, one of the top things that came out of the public meetings. We need to have some kind of litter management program installed and a managed hunting program, like I recommended previously. Capital improvements. Reclamation can cost share on a 50/50 basis with the city because they are landowners. So depending on budget availability, capital improvements can be made that way. I encourage staff to work with the partners, the stakeholder groups that are already there. They are ready to go. They're talking about fundraising efforts and getting volunteer labor and donated materials. So they are on board with helping in any way they can. There does need to be a road infrastructure established. I know Operations has some plans already in place for that. Restroom facilities, like I mentioned, whether they be something as simple as a porta potty or a vault toilet, something needs to go in there. And then enhancement of trail systems that are currently there. And then an entrance station, signage, and gate is recommended for capital improvements. And that's a picture there of sort of a low-cost outdoor, open-to elements entrance station. Special events. We also recommend enhancing the special events that are currently already going on there and working with stakeholder groups to enhance those, expanding them to increase use of the recreation area and then increasing revenues as well through participation in these events. The plan also talks about funding opportunities, and it lists 30 different grant opportunities that are out there, from trail building grants to capacity building grants for organizations to help get this 501(c)(3) off the ground, to bike trail grants, to boat ramp grants, to stewardship grants, to put on programs. There's all kinds of things out there. And then, of course, there's a few conceptual maps in the plan that it's hard to see here, but in your copy, you'll see a little bit better. The zoning is represented by the different colors of lines, and we've pinpointed areas where we think that the restrooms should go. And if you know Twin Buttes, you know there was restrooms out there at one point, and there was an entrance station, all those things. We're kind of going along those same lines and saying, they need to go back in. We've proposed some new camping loops for the groups that are already out there using the area. And we've also talked about areas where we need to maintain access to the water because that's important for the windsurfers and the fishermen and the kayakers. They need to be able to get down as the water recedes. We need to move our infrastructure, just in terms of roadways, down to the water to allow them to maintain access. And here's another conceptual map of the South Pool, and we have all the existing pipe rail and gates that are already there on the maps as well. And we talked a little bit about in the plan which one of those should be closed and which should be opened, and if groups are allowed access through those pipe rails and gates, perhaps we recommended a group permit system where they are allowed access through a group permit process. So that's the end of the slideshow. Next steps, like Carl said today, we're just asking that you recommend to adopt this plan. And then after that, we plan on submitting the Motorized Trails map to the Bureau to get their approval of that actual motorized trail map. And then we look forward to submitting an application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Motorized Trails Grant Program to go ahead and get funding to start making improvements. The good thing about that program is it's not just limited to trail work. You can get restroom developments, campground developments, other things associated with those trails. So we're looking forward to doing that. And I will take any questions if you have them.
Do you have questions on the, on the presentation? Mr. Urspelt, your, your stakeholder meetings?
Yes.
That you had, what kind of participation did you have?
On the stakeholder, stakeholder group meeting, we specifically invited stakeholder groups that we were aware of in the area, and we put out sort of the call on the forums, the hunting forums, and things like that. We got about 36, I believe, citizens, and they represented the hunting community, the fishing community, kayaking, the geocaching, the running. We, we balanced it out, so we had people from each group, and we, we actually, what's the word, immersed the different groups together. We forced the different groups to sit at different tables. So one representative from each group was at a certain table, and that allowed them to mix their ideas and to come together on a vision. So that was a smaller group because it was that workshop format. The general session meeting that we had, we had over, I want to say, 50 or 60 people. The San Angelo Dirt Riders had a huge group come out because they're a very strong group. We had some hunters. We had a lot of people that live around Nazareth and Twin Buttes come out. So we had a good participation.
Great. And so you were very pleased with the stakeholders as far as the true cross-section?
Absolutely.
That it was covering?
It was covering all facets, yeah, all recreation groups. Absolutely, yes.
Question?
Mr. Alexander?
How, this may be a Carl White question. I want to know, was there a discussion on fee? How did the fees, so we've done this before. We had fees figured out. This goes over to Lysia now about how come we might have to annex Twin Buttes to apply rules and ordinances. But fees, do we have a recommendation there? How, how do they fit in this plan? Does this plan have anything to do with it? Is that a separate deal?
We, well, we have a fee recommendation. It was in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan because it was a joint fee for Lake Nazareth and Twin Buttes. So it was an annual pass to get access to both for residents.
And it doesn't include Ivy, though. I mean, we, we did discuss Ivy, didn't we? Ivy linking Ivy fees to this access to Twin Buttes?
No, no, because, I mean, not that I'm aware of. The Colorado River Municipal Water District is in control of Ivy, and they, I mean, we could talk with that agency and see about linking them.
The more you cross over, the better. One pass gets them to all these places, and it's better for, for the common person. But gates, people always ask me, when are the gates going in, or, you know, that comes up all the time. On the Facebook page, they just hit me with that question all the time.
The pipe rail project and the gates, that's, that was completed last, last winter. So we, we can lock the gates when we need to, and we do from time to time when we get significant rainfall to keep the roads from getting torn up. And for instance, we've got the, the south entrance to the South Pool locked up now because of the pumping operation. So we have the ability to lock the gates. We just don't have the process in place to allow for access if we keep all the gates locked. So right now, none of the gates are locked unless we need to have them locked.
Okay, and the fee process, if we did charge a fee, then you would have a key to the gate? Is that how it would work?
Yeah, the plan did not recommend using the key system. It recommends using a combination system.
Okay.
So that way, it can be changed periodically, you know, not every week, but maybe every year to limit some of the, so when you get your new permit, you get the new combination type deal. But we recommend that we create an actual entrance at the main north pool entrance where people would be coming in because we have this issue of, say, there's visitors coming in. There's a lot of people who come.
You're talking to manned?
Manned, yes, whether by volunteer or paid staff labor. We have this issue of, say, there's visitors coming from out of town to come ride the motorized trails. And there has been, there were actually several people here at the public meeting who came from Abilene to talk about that they drive down here to ride the trails. And they may not have access to the city departments from eight to five to be able to gain, get their pass, to be able to get access. So we're asking there be some place where, if it's not at the park, somewhere else where they can get access to it after hours per se.
Convenience stores?
Well, and a man gate would, you know.
Man gate would do it?
Would, would do that, obviously, or a park host that's onsite, living there to be able to just knock on their camper and say, I'm from out of town. I need the pass, kind of a thing.
Okay. And Lysia, are we going to have to annex all of Twin Buttes to be able to put ordinances into effect on that property?
The ordinance, these ordinances that regulate conduct and, and, you know, these type, I don't, I don't know. I'd have to look at that.
It's really under the contract. I think it has more to do with the contract with the Bureau of Reclamation, and what the contract gives us leeway to do is where I would spend my energy. Okay, because, I mean, we're charged with taking care of it, so I don't think we have any problem. My, my first blush would be.
So we're not prevented from applying rules?
No.
I mean, what, what I would say.
That was my concern.
What I would say is, I think the rule, if there is any limit on what we can or can't do, it's probably in the contract.
Right, or in the federal regulations. And I've been in extensive discussions over the last several years about how, you know, Twin, Twin Buttes and their owner, the ownership by the Bureau. You know, they really wanted to understand what is it that we could enforce, whether we were enforcing their rules, whether our folks would have to get deputized as federal officers to enforce their park rules. And I think the better angle would be to have our own rules and enforce them, and then have concurrent jurisdictions. So we have been, the jurisdictional issues are very touchy, and, and, you know, we're trying to map them out. But as far as annexing, I think that was also a discussion that I engaged in with the Bureau and AJ, and we were also looking at them relinquishing some of the lands or us annexing. So we've been working on this project with them.
But it takes a resolution. It takes some kind of understanding, a final understanding to go ahead and implement these rules, correct? I mean, we can't, we can't just do it now because we don't know the layout.
We've been working on that with folks from the Bureau, from Austin, and, you know, just trying to come up with a mutual target of, you know, of what it is that we want to regulate and enforce. And I think part of Carl's progress and his mission is also to come up with some defined plans so that we can do so, and so we're on our way.
This plan would help.
Yes, absolutely.
If we approve this, and so I guess my final question, the final question everybody's going to want to know is what's the ETA? You know, when is this going to happen? When, when does this all come together and we can then implement these rules? Is it a year from now, or is it less or more?
It's a process, so I'm not sure I can say that.
We also, I'm sorry, we also have to look at the plan and see, I mean, there's costs associated with what's being recommended also. So we'd have to take a look at that and see as far as what fees would be coming in and how much the city would possibly even have to subsidize something like that. So it's, it's, it's still something we'd have to look at from a financial standpoint also.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve, but do I have other questions on the presentation? I have two questions I'm going to need some clarity on. What, what does this plan specifically do on off-road vehicles? What would you characterize as is the current environment? And what are you, what are you offering on off-road vehicle use, okay? And then the second one is the same thing, characterize hunting now and hunting after this plan is in place. So I want you to characterize hunting before and after, and I want you to characterize off-road vehicle use before and after.
No problem. Yeah, those are the two big activities and two of the most contentious ones, I might add. Currently, off-road use, any off-road use out there by ATV or motorcycle is not legitimized in the eyes of the Bureau. We are, those who are doing it are violating federal regulations. It's kind of been a out-of-sight, out-of-mind type of deal for them for, for many years, but they want the city to take action to help manage this process. They do have areas where they have legitimized off-road vehicle use, like at Quartz Mountain Nature Park, which we analyzed here in the plan, and they are open to that process. So the next step would be to provide the actual GPS coordinates of the current trails now to the Bureau. They will look at it. They will overlap it with their sensitive archaeological sites, and they will tell us if we need to reroute a few of those and then move forward. It's legitimized. The activity is promoted, and we can move forward with providing more amenities for that group. In terms of hunting, currently.
Back up a second. Designated area?
A designated area, that is one of the Bureau's.
I mean, how do I know if I'm out there, you know, walking, or hiking, or hunting that I, that I am or I am not, where I'm going to get run over by an ATV or a motorcycle?
Right.
And, and how do they know where I'm going to be so that they don't have to worry about coming over a hill? And there I am, walking, walking on their trail.
We recommend utilizing the signage recommendations that I mentioned where we have, and currently, there is some signage out there that the group, the trail group has done themselves. But overall signage and then creating maps. Right now, on, on the city side, you can sort of see hunting areas. It's all you can see. There's no overarching map designating what you can do where. And then, yes, the Bureau will only approve motorized use on a designated trail. You will not be able to drive your ATV anywhere you want. It will be on maintained trails that are marked, and they have arrow markers to tell you the direction. There should be single tracks. You can only go one direction, so you won't run into anybody currently. Some of them are single tracks. Some of them aren't because they're just dirt trails in some areas. So that will help manage that activity and provide rules for engagement. So hunting, currently, like I said, there's a lot of misinformation out there. If you go read the forums online, you know, is this allowed? Is this not allowed? Do I have to have a permit? Do I not? I don't have to have a permit? Oh, my gosh, this is great. Can I bait? You know, what can I shoot with? There's just no, been no rules. It's sort of been a no-man's land. There's a great group of hunters out there who are following all the rules, and those stakeholders were invited to that workshop, and they are all about managing the area, not allowing people to shoot whatever they want, whenever they want. There's a lot of skeet shooting going on there, target shooting, pistol shooting, all kinds of things. All that is not technically allowed currently by city ordinance nor federal regulations. So that's the current status of hunting right now. Temporary blinds that are becoming permanent blinds, being built out there. People bringing brush and trash from their, I shouldn't say trash, brush and pallets and things like that from their home to construct blinds, all those things. And that's not allowed via federal regulations either. No permanent blinds are allowed. They must be, if, if you want to allow that, you can create a permitting process where you allow it, and they tag it, and it's gone within 24 hours, all those things. So that's the current status, and this plan recommends a managed hunting program whereby you actually specify which, you know, types of firearms are allowed, where they're allowed, maybe actually even divvying up your hunting zones into just a waterfall area, excuse me, versus a deer hunting area, that kind of a thing. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am.
And, access to those different parts, because that's the... You know, when you look at the hunting zones now, one, two, three, four, I mean, they're all over, particularly on the waterfront.
Yeah.
And, so, I'm trying to understand how they would access those. Because, some of those, if it's only by foot, it's too far.
Yeah, essentially, the hunting zones currently is just the entire lake area divided up into zones. There's... There was no rhyme or reason necessarily. They're just bounded by the roads and the creeks, and they named it to help people identify where they were going, essentially. Like, I'm going to hunting zone two. The new zones limit that a little bit, and we provide access points to those areas via vehicle, but only to certain areas. And, so, they're allowed to get in there and then walk from that point to their specified spots. A lot of the other agencies that we looked at do not even allow vehicle traffic in there whatsoever. It's complete walk-in, including OHIV. You have to walk in from the parking area with your tree stand on your back and your gun. And, same with the Wildlife Service... The Fish and Wildlife Refugees, the same thing. You walk in, so...
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Other questions on the presentation before I call for a vote? Okay. Is there any public input on this before I call for a vote? All right. I have a motion and a second to accept this as presented. I'd like to call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And, any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're on to item number 23. This is consideration of approving additional improvements at Civic League Park to support the operation of the International Water Lily Collection, including a new basin, pavilion, and water misting system. And, we have a presentation by our Parks and Recreation Director, Carl White.
Again, this is really conceptual. We're asking councils to consider these improvements conceptually. City staff has reviewed these requests, and city staff does recommend their proceeding. We did have this discussion item at the last Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting, and they do recommend approval of moving forward with these improvements. One member did vote against it, and that was in regards to the large live oak tree that's adjacent to the basins. The improvements in this scenario would be funded by others, not the city. The improvements would require the removal of the large live oak tree that's on the north side of the collection. And, under this scenario, the city would need to enter into an agreement with the group, in this case, the San Angelo Council of Garden Clubs. And, then with that agreement, we would return to city council for consideration of approval of that agreement. With the improvements, if they're implemented, the city estimates that the additional maintenance cost to the city would be $2,500 a year. Just a quick orientation. The International Water Lily Collection is located at Civic League Park, bounded by the North Concho River, Pecos Street, Beauregard, and Park Street. It is home to the International Water Lily Collection, which is world-known. We've been holding the annual Lily Fest at this location for the last eight... We're on our eighth year now. This is a rendering, a conceptual rendering, going back to 2004. The addition of the basin over here in this quadrant was envisioned back at that time. We actually developed construction documents for its construction, and when we had the funding, we didn't have enough funding to build this last basin, so we didn't build it. But, we do have construction documents for it. Conceptually, we wanted to do it back in 2005. Improvements at Civic League Park are in the adopted capital improvement plan, specifically the addition of this basin. The misting system, there's three major items. The addition of the basin, the pavilion, and the misting system. The Council of Garden Clubs has received a $20,000 grant from the San Angelo Health Foundation for this misting system. It is something that I think that we could proceed with outside of the agreement to allow it to be constructed, because it's really... It doesn't require construction documents. It's the installation of a pump and some lateral pipes and some standards and some emitters. So, I think that could go ahead. The funding is there. This is just a conceptual rendering of the pavilion. Let me back up and show you. The pavilion would be located at this general location where there's some garden beds right now, just behind the live oak tree. It's a good spot for that. It could be used for rentals. As you know, there's different weddings down there, wedding receptions. It's also a place for education in terms of the water lily collection. So, we could get some rental revenue out of it. It's a good spot for it, and it would take up the place if we removed the tree. We would still have shade with the pavilion. So, this is just really a conceptual rendering. It's not necessarily, this is what it's gonna look like, but just the thought is that we could add a pavilion along that slope on that north side and provide some shade for people who visit the collection.
Which tree has been removed? Is that the tree?
This is the large live oak tree that's really just... It's too close to the collection. The tree's been there for a while, and this basin right here was built in the Depression, the 1936, I believe, by the WPA. It was intentionally built as a reflecting pond. There used to be rose beds along either side, but it hasn't really served that purpose in a long, long time. There's been water lilies in this basin for decades. In 2003, we added these two raised basins here, and then 2005, we added this one, this one, and this one. We didn't add this one because of the money and its proximity to the tree. But, really, the tree is too close to the collection. Every March, when live oaks do drop their leaves, and, of course, the oak tassels and the acorns fall into primarily this basin and somewhat in this basin. And, Mr. Landen's here. We have an agreement with Mr. Landen with...
I have a question.
To operate this collection. He can speak to that. Yes, ma'am.
Are you available for a...
Let me be sure Mr. Alexandria was through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'll just...
No, I'm gonna go on what he's saying. Anyway, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Alexandria is done. Ms. Farmer?
Okay, I just wanted to know if Carl was gonna be available for a commercial as good as the one on the swimming pool. If y'all haven't seen it, you need to see it.
It's not on the agenda.
It's good.
Mr. Hurstville?
How big is that oak tree?
I believe it's about 28 inches. He's talking height.
No, I'm talking the diameter of the tree.
I'm thinking about 28 inches, maybe.
Okay. Let me tell you, I'm a... I may be a moron and crazy, but I cut off a portion of my house. I cut off a portion of my house to save-
There you go.
-a pecan tree. Okay? I cut off a portion of my house to save a pecan tree.
I'm with you.
Everything except that.
I'm with you.
But, I've struggled for this for a long time. In my mind, the collection is more important than the tree. And, the Council and Garden Clubs has committed to adding additional trees. If this tree is taken out, they'll come back and plant at least five trees, if not more, in the park.
Carl, part of the discussion, just, and I didn't look at the minute record, but as I recall, part of the discussion back when this... The other basins were built was that when the money was available, council would consider this, and the tree was discussed extensively. And, there was some... You know, there was no vote, but there was a lot of indication from council that when they came back, don't come back asking to remove the tree until you have the money available and you have plans and you're ready to build. And, then they would seriously look at that. So, that's just a little history of prior council discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just say that this is-
Hang on, Mr. Alexander. I have Mr. Silves next.
Okay.
I am totally on board with Kendall, because my question is, how old is the tree?
Tree was planted by a squirrel, according to Jimmy Rogers, which is Park Zoo superintendent back at that time. It was a volunteer, in other words. It wasn't planted by the Park Department. It let go. It's a co-dominant tree, which means it will probably fail. We have trimmed it.
We have trimmed it for some time. We had to make the... When the 2010 symposium was there, IWGS, we trimmed it up. So, now it's real lofty. It wreaths in the wind. Eventually, parks will have to take it out anyway, because it's a tree and a living entity and will die. The thing of it is, if you want to hold up a capital improvement project for a tree, then I don't... I don't know how that's gonna work with me. The thing about it is, is the tree's got a lot of problems as far as the park maintenance, keeping the leaves, the trash. An oak tree is the trashiest tree on the planet. I wish it were 300 feet. The rule of thumb for botanical gardens is for... And, this is kind of what we're talking about here in Civic League Park. The rule of thumb is for every 10 feet of tree height, you have 50 feet of distance because of root intrusion. This tree has already gone into the primary basin, which has got a liner, so it's ruining everything we have. It's also... The root system would most likely be on number two. Number two, Carl, is right there. Those drain systems have already been installed, their PVC pipe. The courthouse recently had to dig up the whole front yard of their courthouse because the trees invaded their system, which had to be fixed, you know? So, we're looking at something that... Well, the collection cannot continue. The reason is, is because of all the silage and trash that goes into the pool. Once leaves and trash, and let's face it, an oak tree starts out, drops its leaves in May, and it goes for a month, and it tassels. Then, it goes ahead, and we get the new leaves, and we get honeydew that comes off the aphids that go on my lilies. And, then we got the acorns for the rest of the year. So, all the tropical season, this is dumping trash into the pools. I can only drain the pools once a year, because once the collection is in gear and the plants are growing, if they grow, then, you know, I can't clean out anything. Can't sweep it around, and it's 75,000 gallons a year in this primary basin, so we wouldn't want to waste it anyway. Wouldn't be wasted. It all goes into the river. But, the water is not really the issue. It putrifies to the point that the lilies won't grow because it's anaerobic. You can't... If you dump... It's kind of like if you took all your household trash in your house and dumped it in your living room for a year. Think how that would be. That's what I deal with, with this tree.
Ken, what damage have you seen?
It belongs 300 feet this way or that way or any way, and it's right smack dab in the way.
Have you seen damage to the existing ponds? You were talking about that and the liner.
The liner was put in by myself in the city of San Angelo. They didn't know what to do. The individual that was involved at that time was Bill McCall Clannahan. He did not know what to do to try to salvage this pool. It was riddled with cracks. We were losing about 2,000 gallons a day. So, I couldn't grow the plants because of the chlorine inclusion. So, we was putting so much water in there that, from the city system, that the plants would die. So, we didn't really know what we would do. It was gonna cost about $500,000 to fix the pool, to jackhammer it up and put it back. But, it was archival anyway. It was built in 30... You say 36. I think it's 34 it was built. So, it had a lot of historical significance here in the city, but there was no way to save it until we figured a way that we could put a liner in it and shoot the liner over the cracks. And, this stuff came together as an epoxy came together, was shot on, and it saved the pool. And, we only paid... Well, because I was the director at the time, the guy that put it in there said, "If we could use this as an example and an advertisement for him, he'd do it for me for..." Do us for $40,000 as opposed to 50. So, we saved a little money there, but we saved the pool. Many people, after the fact that built... Had people that built the pool, family members back in the '30s thanked me for that, not for the water lilies per se, but the fact that we saved something that was an historical certificate.
So, I guess my next question probably is mute, because I was going to just ask, what if we could not build around the tree? But, it sounds like the tree shedding its leaves and its acorns is the biggest pro... I hate to get rid of the tree. I really do. You sort of got me sold on the idea, but I... I'm kind of like Kendall. I love trees. And, I... This is one that... My question would have been, you know, the age of the tree was just probably pretty old, but I just... I can't see getting rid of it, but it sounds like it probably has to happen.
I've got a point. If the tree stays, it makes no sense to add this basin, and it's really hard to keep anything in this basin here. San Angelo has something unique in the water lily collection. We're known around the world for this collection. We're not known for this tree. We're known for the collection. People come from around the world to see the collection. They don't come to see the tree.
What is it? This other tree right here on the left, is it on the west side of the...
It is on the high ground above the collection.
Does that affect...
It's a juniper.
North side, okay.
It's a juniper. So, it's upright. It's not wide.
No, let's not touch that one.
Okay, Mr. Self?
I understand the tree, and I can go along with the removal of that tree for the lilies. And, this is... I guess maybe this is a future agenda item, which I don't guess is the appropriate time. But, I've noticed in some of our other parks, which I think are some of the great assets of San Angelo, that some of the other trees are dying. And, I know some could be from oak will, but some of them aren't necessarily oak trees. I'd really like to know why some of those trees are... Other trees are dying, you know? If y'all could... And, like I said, I guess that's probably not the appropriate time.
It's okay. We'll take a note. We'll bring it back up and make sure it makes an agenda for you.
One more question.
Okay. Mr. Alexander, did you... Would you like to speak?
Yeah, you know... Okay. Boy, it's hard to say. I'm looking for my pictures for one of these events, and that tree is part of the spirit of the place. We just talked about it with Downtown. He didn't say spirit of the place, but there's a place, and that tree makes it a part of this place. And, it is hot, and to have a tree that big is... It's an asset. So...
Carl says that's his place.
I can... I might go for removing the tree if you'll put 10 more trees in, in that park.
Wasn't there a tree?
When we're in drought level conservative-
Wasn't there a tree there, sir?
Drought level zero or...
He cut it down?
What do you call it? Conservation level? When we go back to conservation level... Level one, you can plant, but you need four gallons a day for four years. You really need a conservation. We hit that, it triggers, 10 trees go in, costs $200 a piece or whatever, including planting them, and beautify that park with other live oaks, other trees. And, then in 30 years, we look back and we have a better place in all respects.
Okay, so what you just... Just the last part of what you said again?
I would propose that 10 trees go in to that park to replace the one tree we're taking out.
Well, I think it's a-
And, I know there's a cost, but there's a cost to taking that tree out, really.
Okay, thank you.
It's a...
Mr. Silves?
Ken, one last question. It sounds like you're going to have to chop it down anyway, but how, how difficult would it be to move the tree? I guess it's too large to move.
Well, there's a city in this, I don't remember what it is-
I mean, you're going to have to dig there anyway, so that's what I'm saying.
They just did that. They moved, it's cost them a quarter of a million dollars, but it was a sacred thing, kind of a, an archival. The tree was, you know, valuable to people, and there was a building. It's like I told Harold Amigos one time, I said, you want the tree? The tree for me is in my front office, like in this building, sitting, and we make a little patch in the hole and, and we keep it in, and we keep the tree here. The thing about it is, I think that that's a real good point from Mr. Alexander about adding trees. But the thing about Civic League Park, and I think eventually, and this was, this was back in the administration with Mr. Tom Adams, that there was a, there was a forward plan going, and Rick, Rick knows the guy. I don't think I remember who the individual was that I was put with and married with. They were going to turn this park into a Botanic Garden eventually, which is the only part to really do that because of the water feature that I've built here. The thing about that is, is that you don't follow, you have to follow that rule that's in Botanic Gardens, for every ten feet of height, you're fifty feet away from a water estuary or an impoundment. And in that case, all the criteria is met. This one's smack right dab in the middle of a pool where you can't grow anything. So I'm losing the primary basin now, because we've trimmed it to this point. It's become such a canopy, it takes over a third of the park, that it drops all this silage. So I'm losing, I won't have this pool if we don't build the one we're talking about that's getting funded. I will lose number two anyway, which is there. And then the big primary, primary, I'm going to lose it, because so much trash, you can't get the anaerobic bacteria and the stuff that goes in there. You can't get the lilies to grow, because this is a concrete impound, we have a lot of trash in here. And then on this other end, right here, we've put a memorial tree, which is another live oak. And it's pitched at twenty degrees towards the fall over, and it's got a south wind pushing. Mr. Begno says, replace that right away with something like a Texas persimmon, or something that would last for the length of the time that these, because these trees get big. And to me, I'm like everyone else, really, they're sacred when they get big. They're good things to have. This one's smack dab in the living room, though. And in that context, also it's co-dominant. Now, this is what you need to think about this, is with many testimonies, testimony that I gave, I gave you this much stuff about eight years ago, why this tree was a danger. Eventually it's going to crack and fall. Now, it's going to, when it does, it's going to take out your park. It's going to be ruined, your investment is wasted if it falls. And Rick's put a lot of money in that new fence that we got down there, that chain link wrought iron fence that keeps out the animals. And I appreciate that, because we just had a chain link eventually. I mean, that's what we had originally, is that. But the park is internationally known, it's like Mr. White says, it's not known for a tree. We're known for the lilies that I put in there, and I put the finest stuff on the planet, because I've got the largest collection, period. God is next to me. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Consideration of approving additional improvements to the Civic League Park to support the operation of the International Water Lily Collection, including a new basin, pavilion, and water misting system, authorizing city staff to negotiate an agreement for the construction of the improvements with the San Angelo Council of Government Garden Clubs. You've had a presentation, you've had good, a good debate about the tree and those kinds of things. I'm seeking a motion.
I would like to ask a question.
Okay.
Ask the question.
Ask the question. It says in your proposal that the misting system, where are you going to mount it? It says above, I read, was reading the detail, and then it says above. What's above to put your misting pipe and stuff through?
The misting system-
Because it's ugly if it's standing up-
No, there's standards like this, and, and you know, you've seen them around, oh, places like, I would say restaurants, or not restaurants, but the outdoor things. It cools the system. The reason the misting system was part of this project, and it's already paid for, more or less, is to cool the park down. When this park was developed, it was to put in with pavers and the sidewalks. And it's down in a pit. So I don't know if you've been, you've been to Civic League and you've seen it looks. Thing of it is, this gets hot, hotter than Hades. And the tree's good for a point, but it, it takes away also, because here's what happens. The misting system will cool the park twenty degrees. So they're on standards, there's not a pipe or anything around ugly. I told them, I said, I won't stand for that. The misting system cools the park.
Well, that was, that was my question, though, where are you going to put it? There's nothing to mount it on.
Well, the misting system goes on standards, and the water comes from the basin, the water basin. Now, the guy that's going to put it in recommends very much so to get rid of the silage and trash that's being put in there by the tree, because he's got to filter that water. And that water is aged water, he can't-
I had the same question, but I'll let Carl explain it, because I was concerned about the aesthetics.
Okay.
Carl, if you could explain how that attaches.
Yeah, what's the standard?
The standard would be like you see.
Basically, we have lateral lines, which wouldn't be seen, that'd be underground. These are the standards he's talking about, the ones that go upright. And the top are the emitters. What we're talking about placing them is on, like at the corners, corners of the fences, where you just see a single black pipe come up.
That's above the water, but you could place them out of sight, and that-
And it's not going to be a hose that's-
Okay, thank you.
Going from stand to stand.
And the way it works is, if they work when we need them, we don't, we don't, and it's forty thousand gallons a year, and what is it going to take?
Mr. Self?
Sorry.
I'll move approval.
Second. I have a motion for approval from Mr. Self, a second from Mr. Herschfeld. Do I have further comments or questions before I call for this vote?
They can't come on this. They can't come on this motion. You're right, you're good.
That's right.
His can.
He can add the ten, the ten trees to the motion, but, but Rick said we're going to get ten trees. Write that down, Paul. Write it down.
Wait, that's something we could put in the agreement. We still have to bring the agreement back to city council, it could be in the agreement.
Not, notwithstanding, I think you need to be careful, too, about where you're telling them to place the ten trees. I mean, you just-
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good point.
Okay. So, so I mean, it wouldn't even necessarily be in this park. It's just, but anyway. Okay.
Yeah, the council of garden club for years has said they would give trees if we could get rid of the one that's in the way to make room for something, because we have generations of people coming up that's going to appreciate the trees. So I think that that's a real good bid to put something back if you're going to take it. I agree with that.
I have a motion and a second to approve this, and so I'm looking for public input. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move on to item number twenty-four. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget for grants, new projects, and incomplete projects. I have a presentation by our budget manager, Morgan Chegwin.
Good afternoon. Before you, I have some routine items that are funded already, no use of general fund, fund balance, or anything like that. I'll go through them each. Certainly stop me if you have any questions. The page I'll be going over is about the fourth page of my background. There's some summary information here, but it's the page titled Proposed Budget Amendment Additional Information. And I'll just go item by item here, if it's your pleasure. The first item there before you is AEP Energy Recovery Rebate. Recall that building, the facilities maintenance division has been allowed, as they make improvements that, that yield energy efficiency, to apply for these funds. And we did receive five thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars mid-year and fiscal year thirteen, so we're adding that to their budget to, to be used for, for future energy efficiency improvements and reinvest in that program. The next item you have there, forgive the abbreviation, it's the FET, Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant Local Match. This is, this is really a clerical item, just to budget truly for the transfer to general fund for the services provided, and to transfer that local match into the grant so that we can fully maximize those grant dollars in a time where, where every grant dollar counts. So that's, that item there, twenty-two thousand dollars transferred into the grant, twenty-two thousand dollars paid from the grant in, indirect costs for city services. The third item there before you is a nursing program for an STD clinic. Recall, just a short while back, we had, we were here asking for permission to apply for the Section eleven fifteen waiver funds. This is a new grant that, that staff has gone after and, and received authorization for. This is in the planning stage to establish an STD clinic. This is the first year of a multi-year grant, to get this small amount of thirty-six thousand dollars here in fiscal year thirteen, and continue reinvesting in that program for years to come.
What's multi-year?
I believe it's a four-year grant, and so we're in year one, which is a partial year in fiscal year thirteen, and it will continue, we have a commitment.
This is the one, actually, we just got through speaking about, so it's over five years.
And he did say five, okay.
It's five years, but the government hasn't implemented it quick enough, so they're squeezing five years into about four.
Okay, that's where I was, okay.
The next item here is pedestrian bridge. Recall, this is part of the Concho River Project that we talked about at the last city council meeting, that, much discussion about that bridge, just utilizing the, the property risk management fund, fund balance, as, as allowed by the-
Replacing everything with wood?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I know that's not right.
You'll see, the next item there is for burial containers out at the cemetery. They continue to have a positive sales experience as a result of, of offering that option for interning remains. And so we have sixteen thousand two hundred dollars we want to add to the revenue budget, and thus allow cemetery to utilize those funds to continue their operations. Yes, sir.
Back to you there. Back to the bridge, why are we only paying half?
The River Pedestrian Bridge?
Correct.
The, there's, it's coming out of two sources, it's coming out-
The other fund is the Fund for the River Improvements.
Correct. The river fund's paying half, and the risk-
It's two parts, that's one, so they're coming out of two silos.
But we'll, we'll do the one sixty-seven.
We'll, we'll spend one sixty-seven.
And split it.
The other half that, that we're referring to, that's part of the river project, is already budgeted. This eighty-four thousand was not, so that's why it's before you in this manner. A small item here for community housing development, this is one thousand three hundred and three dollars for restricted, for Galilee construction for neighborhood revitalization. Restricted funds there, just getting those revenues budgeted and expenses budgeted. The last two items here I may speak, speak about together. Avenue P, street drainage improvements, and the twenty thirteen Millin overlay projects. If you'll recall, in twenty twelve, we had one point seven million dollars set aside. When we closed out fiscal year twelve, these rolled to fund balance, should have been carried over in our, our massive routine item carryover that goes in November. It's looked through the cracks, so we're bringing it to you at this time. This is not new dollars being allocated to the project, this is just replenishing dollars that, that should have been carried over. And I might note that on the Millin overlay project, there's a statement that, that city manager approved a portion of that already. There was philosophical discussion about utilizing budgeted dollars from Stormwater Fund, I apologize, from budgeted funds, to use this. It, it of course requires city council approval, and that, that's what's before you today.
Okay. Questions on these items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Do I have further question or comment? Do I have public input on this, on these items? Okay, call for this vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, outstanding, then I'd like to move us forward to item number twenty-five. There's nothing from our executive session today. Item number twenty-six, these are announcements in consideration of future agenda items. Mr. Self, the trees. You want to go ahead and just clarify a little, and Mr. Valens Waylow will take that down for you.
Sure, I, I just noticed that around some of our parks, some of our bigger trees have started to die. I'd just like for Carl to maybe check him, I'm sure he probably knows why, but I'd just like a report on why.
We do, we'll get that to you.
Okay.
Okay, other future agenda items?
I would like for this council to discuss a Chadburn to Bryant connection to help the Coliseum traffic flow.
Okay. Transportation item to, to do something that relieves congestion during events, or whatever?
It's a giant item, it really is, it'd be big for the Coliseum.
Okay. Other future agenda items, Ms. Farmer?
Yes, two. I would like an update of where we are with reference to the Red Arroyo project on water. I'm looking over you two guys over there, if we're at a point, I really would like an update at next meeting. Is that possible?
We'll check. That was Clinton was heading up that project, so we'll discuss that with the group there and get back with you.
And then I have, if I have an item I want on executive session, should I just take that up with the city manager? Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Silva's?
Mr. Ma'am, I've got a couple of, I've had some calls on the, our noise ordinance that seems to be running amok.
Okay.
You know, some folks are just going-
The ordinance is running amok?
The ordinance is.
Yeah. The noise is.
Maybe the teeth of the ordinance are running amok, but that, if we could look into that and discuss what's there, what's not there. And then also, I, I've had a couple of calls, and I think I shared it with, I know I called Jane Flores, I might have shared it with Carl, I don't remember, but the Edgewater project, not project, property, it's, it's pretty, it's got lots of tall weeds out there.
Needed to clean it up?
Yes. Especially along the river, between Chadburn Street and, and the KIDY building, whatever, TV station, whatever that is.
Okay. Other future agenda items or announcements? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, we have a next meeting is June the?
June?
June fourth, twenty-sixth.
June fourth. And so the one after that would probably be on the night, eighteenth?
Yes, sir, and then of course, we have the special meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Right, and then we have the special meeting on the twenty-fifth. One of the things I want council just to be aware of announcement, I will be here on the fourth. I will be on a vacation on the eighteenth. I will be here on the twenty-fifth for the, for the special meeting to, to take care of the election, okay?
I do, I do have one more.
Okay.
I want to reemphasize, I got another text, a text from Dwayne Morrison on the, what he talked about this morning about the help to Oklahoma, he said he had gotten a list of items that are being accepted in Oklahoma, there are diapers, there are canned goods, non-perishable foods, snack items, water and sports drinks. So I want to just, you know, reiterate what his idea of us, as San Angelo stepping up to the plate and maybe helping out somehow, some way.
Okay. All right, I have a motion for adjournment, did I hear us?
We didn't do number twenty-seven.
Okay, consideration of and possible action on matters, thank you. Related to the July second, two thousand and three city council meeting, to see if they want to have a meeting right before the fourth?
Correct, several staff members have asked.
I'll say, so the Tuesday, on the second, Thursday would be on the fourth.
Correct.
Hell, I think y'all lost, you should meet, I don't know why.
I second that.
I'll be here.
Whatever y'all want to do, obviously.
Maybe, I'll be here.
For the holiday purposes.
July's a huge, huge weekend.
The third, the third will be a big deal here in town, but it's a Tuesday, so.
You're talking about in council chambers?
No, I understand, that'd be great, no problem.
Have to get a fire marshal.
Do y'all want to, do you want to look at your plans and then give her, here's what I suggest to you, that you, I suggest you look at your plans and look at what, what might happen, and that we'd be able to tell Ms. Ramirez at the, at the next meeting what you want to do on July second, so.
July ninth?
Yeah, you would be going to the ninth, probably, and then-
Then the sixteenth.
Ninth and sixteenth, or something like that, if you want, or-
I like the second.
Well, we need to keep the sixteenth, because of the annexation schedule that we just adopted.
He didn't say, you just adopted an annexation schedule, and it has all these meetings as they are scheduled on it? So you would have to, they would have to clean it up and bring it back if you move a meeting, is what she said.
So is, does the ninth work for you? It works for me.
It works for you.
It would work, it would work with a change to that schedule. That's probably how that would work. I hear the second's okay.
Let me make sure I understand, I mean, are we looking to change it because staff won't be here? Or council won't be here, or?
No, I just wanted to let you know that it was a holiday week, and sometimes they do schedule, cancel it, or keep the meeting. So just wanted to give you a heads up that it was a holiday week. It's up to you.
We had the, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving this, last year.
Which I also-
Yeah, we bring them up, we bring them up, we discuss them, and then we move on. And I don't, you know, again, I, the second doesn't seem to be such a big deal, since it's a Tuesday, and people that are going to take a long weekend or whatever, still can.
I'm believing it. I'll, I'll go back to what Mr. Morrison used to say, is that people get used to the first and the third, and-
Okay.
Okay, your recommendation?
I think the consensus seems to be, let's just leave it.
Okay.
Okay, okay.